I call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this ninth day of January 2012. If you will please rise with me for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly and Almighty God, we come to you today thanking you and praising you for our many blessings, as well as the opportunities and challenges we face. We pray you will look upon this assembly of county leaders and fill us with the spirit of your wisdom. May we always act in accordance with your will and our decisions be pleasing in your eye. All these names we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody and Happy New Year. Everybody learned to write 2012 now instead of 2011? I'll take six months to get that. Okay now I can keep populating down the documents I have to sign. First is, are there any additional agenda items or changes to the agenda?
Chair, I would request that we pull from the consent agenda and add it to new business, I guess, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Item 2D.
2D as in?
D as in Delta.
Okay.
Do you want to add what?
To the discussion for new business under?
Under F, okay.
Under F.
Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, we need to cancel the closed session under Item 8.
I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye. Post their name. Now I need a motion to approve the amended consent agenda. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Post their name. Public comments, we have one individual who signed up, Mr. Keith Clark.
I'm Keith Clark, live at 212 Acorn Drive in Sanford. I address these marks primarily to the public which may have the opportunity to see these proceedings. A local blogger likes to appropriate the names of founding fathers and write in their behalf. Not even I am that arrogant, so I will simply read some of what the founding fathers have said. He said, Thomas Jefferson said, "We in America do not have government by the majority, we have government by the majority who participate." He also said, "If once the people become inattentive to public affairs, you and I, Congress and assemblies, judges and governors, shall all become wolves." It seems to be the law of general nature in spite of individual exceptions. Alexander Hamilton said, "A fondness for power is implanted in most men, and it is natural to abuse it when acquired." James Madison said, "The essence of government is power, and power lodged as it must be in human hands will ever be liable to abuse." James Madison. He also says, "The truth is that all men having power ought to be mistrusted. Liberty may be endangered by the abuse of liberty, but also by the abuse of power." I thought this quote from Thomas Paine was very interesting. "The strength and power of desposition..." Des- des- deposition? Despotism. Thank you. "...consists wholly in the fear of resistance." Fear of resistance can also be manifested as making significant motions late in the meeting that are not on the agenda, representing items that are not to be voted on that are voted on the agenda. This is probably a result of fear of resistance. Thomas Jefferson also said, "Information is the currency of democracy."
Thirty seconds, Mr. Clark.
I would like to simply address that I believe there are two elements of a job description for a county commissioner. One is the oath of office, the second is the code of ethics. Again, I would remind the public of Thomas Jefferson's words, "We in America do not have government by the majority, we have government by the majority who participate."
First item of old business is the approval of the final agreements for WST industrial grant, Attorney Talbert and off use. We are at page 33 in your agenda package.
This is a reflection about budgeting. Yeah.
Madam Chairman, Board of Commissioners, Happy New Year to you. I hope 2012 is even better than it was in 2011. Here today to talk about the final paperwork for a grant that's been received and approved by the North Carolina Rural Center through a program that they have called Building, Restoration and Reuse. It's an opportunity for communities to be able to leverage dollars from the North Carolina Rural Center for further development in this community in the form of building, renovation improvements, and then in the addition of jobs to the facility or to the operation. In this case, we've been before the commissioners actually a couple of times to pass a resolution, to have a resolution passed where we talked about initially about a 3 percent and then that program changed. We need to change to a 5 percent local match. I have the local match and that, as I said before, to the Board of County Commissioners, that's not coming out of the coffers of the county, that's being paid for by the EDC through the company, so we have that taken care of. The EDC, as the Director of EDC, I've reported to my board how this whole program has transpired and the application has transpired. And so, at the last meeting, I told them that we had approval from the North Carolina Rural Center for a grant in the form of $85,680. The local match, which we have, would be $4284. The company agrees in that process, and that's in those documents that you have in front of you, agrees in that process to create 12 jobs. And if those 12 jobs aren't created, they pay back, aren't created, they pay back that loan. So it's in the form of a grant to the county, the county makes a loan to the company, the loan gets waived off if all the jobs are created. So it's really a pass-through to the county, the county is basically facilitating a grant that comes from the North Carolina Rural Center, probably like a lot of other programs that you have. We monitor that they keep those jobs in place for six months. Some of the renovations have started, they bought the building, WST bought the building in November of last year, they've done some of the renovations, they're not finished with the renovations yet, but they have moved into the facility. Some of the jobs have been created, but not all the jobs have been created, so we'll be working with them. The next paperwork that will come through to us, to the EDC, and not before the Board, but as part of the pro forma through here would be requests for payments by the company from the county, and we in turn make that request to the North Carolina Rural Center. The project or this program funds renovations up to 50 percent of the total cost of renovations, and in this case, we're talking about $85,000. The company has a baseline of 35 jobs that they actually moved over from Wilson Road when they left that facility and moved into this new facility in the plant, they had 12 jobs as a result of that. I don't know what else I can say about the project, except that it's a nice opportunity for the county, and sometimes we go to the city for this, for the county to help a small business that's been here for quite a few years already, that seems to have their customers satisfied, whereas they stayed in business, have stayed in business for quite a few years. They employ people that are in the construction business, this piece of it will actually be more for the manufacturing, they're going to be doing some manufacturing as a result of this project. So that's something new for them, and I'm happy to see that in this community. Anyway, it's a nice opportunity, it's a great program that the Rural Center runs, it gets funded by the General Assembly every year, or every time they meet for budgets. This particular program did, unlike any other program at the state, did receive an increase in funding, and to allow the Rural Center to expand the program to not only look at unoccupied buildings that have been empty for six months or better, but to look at buildings that are occupied and see if they can add value and in turn create some more jobs within the community. And then, if there are any questions?
Bob, you mentioned the 12 jobs, and maybe I missed it somewhere, can you show me where in the WST provisions itself that it refers to 12 jobs?
In under Item Number 3 in the Owner Loan Performance Agreement?
Read.
In the first sentence, on Page 1, the first sentence of the job creation?
Page 46, yeah.
No, yeah, that's right, you're looking at. Right at the first sentence, it talks about the owner agrees that the business should be required to create 12 jobs.
Which paragraph?
Paragraph 3.
Okay.
Within the 24-month period. This project will move a lot faster than 24 months, we'll actually see this come to a close very quickly.
Okay. Will there be provisions to update these documents to get the correct dates in here? Because I mean, these were presumptive, that we were going to get this approved, I think, earlier, right? I see dates on here, starting 11/16/2011, which is over a month ago.
That's where the date of the approval of the North Carolina Rural Center Board, that's when they took it up, and that's when actually the timeframe starts for those jobs.
So it starts before we approve the package?
Yes.
All right. Educate me here, Bob, what is the authority that we're citing to put this forward for a vote under the general statutes? This is under economic development or under community development?
Well, I saw that email where you asked that question, and I'm not sure I answered it, to be honest with you, because here's the way we have always looked at this. Here's a program that's been out there for many years, it has morphed into something different over the years, where lately, or the latest addition was to be able to look at buildings that have been occupied. It is funded by the General Assembly, that body that makes up the general statutes, and they have developed this program to allow cities and counties to make application for funding for grants that then help make improvements in the community to help create jobs.
Right.
So, under what statute, I'm not sure how that works. In my view, and I know the question you may have, is that you're looking at this as an incentive, you can look at this as an incentive, I don't necessarily do that, I look at this, so incentives would be under 158.7.1. Community development would be something totally different. In this case, we're looking at a pass-through through the county, and all the county is doing in this case is facilitating the process, okay? So that you go from the state to the next body, the next higher body, if you will, the county or the city.
Right, and so as not to be mistaken about the motivation behind the question, I ask that because we're a community of laws, a state of laws, and a nation of laws, and we want to, what we do, we want to be in compliance with the law, even if we disagree with the law. And in this case, the reason I ask the question is because general statute, I believe it's 158.7.1, which is the provision for economic development. You know, we just recently, I think December the 13th, we had an orientation on for two hours by the School of Government about, you know, what constitutes the law, and what's been decided law, what's been tested in the courts and all of that. And in this case, it seems to me that what we're proposing to do here doesn't fall under 158, that this is really more of a community development type of initiative. As you said, it morphed. The Rural Economic Development Center is kind of a smorgasbord of incentives and loans and other sorts of things. Seems to me that this is appropriate under general statute 160A, which is under community development. And in that case, it would allow us to move forward if we're an extension of the General Assembly and we're going to be obedient to the law, that we could approve it under that statute as a body without a public hearing, and that that would seem to be appropriate. But the reason I ask the question is because I want to know, are you acting in the capacity of an economic developer or community developer in proposing this? And if this is the case, that it's a community development initiative, it seems to me appropriate that we also hear from our community development chief. That was my point, that he ought to be speaking to this and that he ought to be presenting this, because it's really a community development initiative.
Well, and maybe so, but I think historically, again, I'm not worried about the statute that it falls under, that we've helped facilitate, we are the body that typically represents the county, the city, and the town of Broadway in talking to different businesses and in how we can help different businesses. This is a program that's offered through the state, in this case, through the North Carolina Rural Center, which is a state-funded body, and we've handled that part of the process. It may be handled differently in other communities, we've always handled this particular program.
Okay.
So, I cannot answer that.
I have another question. In the part where, it talks about the grantees' responsibilities back to the Rural Economic Development Center. It gets very specific as far as reporting and all that kind of items. I didn't see that specificity for us to be able to assure that we're getting that information to report, and that becomes a burdensome process if we don't have it in this contract. I know there's vague terms in there, but it's not the specificity that we have that are obligated to us.
Yeah, I saw that email as well, but the, I think, please understand that the documents that you have in front of you, verbatim, I don't think there's anything that our attorneys changed, and that this comes straight from the program manager over to North Carolina Rural Center, it's something that they send out, assuming that the body, the political body will approve that particular agreement, performance agreement and loan agreement, because we did do the application and we did approve a resolution moving forward on that process. So, the wording of that comes straight from the North Carolina Rural Center. So they're satisfied with that wording. What I know this.
Who is the?
They made the North Carolina Rural Center.
Okay.
This is their document, okay? So we're trying to, in this case, we've got an agreement that basically sets a provision for the company to make sure that they repay the loan if they don't create the jobs, but we also agree to use our best efforts to try to, if the company doesn't come up with the money, that through the loan we have with them, that we have a provision in there that allows us to try to get some money to help repay that program.
See, I understand that part, Bob, but it's the work effort of reporting back to the center, that where they have some very specific guidelines on dates, times, efforts to report, and yet I didn't see the same specificity for us to be able to get that information from the company itself. And so, therefore, if we don't have that in there, then that may be hard for us to get, for us to meet our obligation back to the company.
Let me echo that sentiment, because Charlie's on a good point here. We have, already have a problem of gathering employment data from local companies, it's been an ongoing problem since time immemorial, I think. And what we've got here is somebody reporting, getting a grant, reporting directly back to the Rural Center, and the Rural Center has not, unlike the one North Carolina fund, where we have to, the county has the burden of tracking their information, in this case, the county has no role or no involvement, so we don't even get, we're not even entitled to that information. That doesn't seem to be...
Well, that's not how I read it. All the requirement is for the county to report back to the center, not the company itself. And in the company itself, we didn't write the specificity for us to get the information to report.
Page 47, Paragraph 4, Verification Jobs, begins the discussion of how jobs are to be verified, and then you go down to Paragraph 6, Records, where it talks about, you know, the county having access to records, and then on Page 53, there's a limited waiver of confidentiality that is going to be required that they sign that gives us access to their employment security information that they provide to the state of North Carolina, so...
I guess what I'm looking at is Page 44, where the center was very specific on what dates that we have to report, we don't have that same specificity from WST.
Yeah, the burden, you're right, the burden is put on the county.
That's right, and that shouldn't be.
It's not only the burden's on the county, but the liability of that eighty-some thousand is on the county if all these requirements aren't met. There was something in here that in the five years I've been on this board that did excite me, and I like the concept of this whole program by the Rural Center, because I think it is a great tool to have for community development. But on Page 45, where they talk about having access finally, this is something I've wanted for five years for every company that we've given incentives out to, but there's a North Carolina Unemployment Insurance 101 form that gives us access to the quarterly payroll reports on that, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
In this document, it does refer to that, yes.
And I would like to say, I would like to see that going forward in any incentive agreement that we have where the jobs, you know, created, so I'll say that publicly, I want to see that in our future agreements as well.
I would rather know what it is before I make it a requirement. I don't know what it is. I know what I read here, but I don't know what that form actually requires of a company.
Well, I think what the, the way I interpret this waiver is it finally gives us a way to go to the Unemployment Insurance Commissioner and say, you know, we have a waiver from this company, they know what the employer ID is, we want to verify the jobs. And I would hope that that would be how the baseline is created here, rather than just taking a company's word for it.
I'm not in disagreement, I'm simply saying, I'd rather know and see the form and find out what the requirements are for a company, so I'll point it out. Let me mention, I agree with question of Womack, it does seem more like community development. It, and Ms. Kennedy's here, who works in this area, it would seem to me, it's sort of like HUD gives the state of North Carolina a grant, a certain amount of money, we pass it on to the county, they pass it on to the counties, we pass it on to the citizens of the county. It then becomes a loan to that individual if they fail to meet all the requirements. So, this works in a similar manner. What I want to know from you perhaps is, and God forbid, I like what I'm hearing and reading, if they don't fulfill all the obligations, the whole $85,000 has to be paid back to...
This is prorated based on the number of jobs actually?
Whatever it is.
Yes, seventy-one...
Seventy-one dollars per job.
Correct. So, if they fail, what happens to that money? Does it come back to us?
And then it goes back to the Rural Center.
Does the Rural Center accept it on our behalf until we find somebody else, or what?
Well, I think it just gets put back into their program, until they do the next application, it doesn't reserve it for us.
That's what I was going somewhere else. That's my very point, I want to make sure that we understand that and that we know that that is the way it works.
Yes, that's the way it works.
So what happens if the company files bankruptcy? Are we on the track and obligated for the whole $800,000?
No, $85,000.
Yeah, we're only loaned...
Eighty-five, six hundred and eighty-nine.
Well, we're on hook for $85,000, couldn't possibly be on the hook for $85,000 even though we have notes, right?
You're absolutely correct.
That's what concerned me about this, because I think it creates a liability for county taxpayers, and secondly, it's horrendous, the additional reporting requirements that our staff's going to have to go through on this. Explain to me, Bob, the payment schedule, because I saw several things in here that concerned me about that also. If I understand this right, the company submits to us their paid invoices, it is very restrictive on what can be reimbursed and what can't be, and so, they submit that to us, do we submit that to the Rural Center? I understand from what I read, the Rural Center only reimburses 50 percent of that. So if they submit to us $20,000 in paid invoices, we only get $10,000 back, so at what point, you know, do we disperse the funds and are in for $85,000?
It will be, the approved amount is $85,000, they may or may not use all of that amount, but at the time we were doing this application, that was, $85,000 was 50 percent of the total cost of renovations that they were planning on doing at that time, okay? And so, that's how we kind of came up with those numbers initially. They may or may not spend all of that, $160,000, $160,000 plus, $70,000 plus renovating that facility if they don't. All they get is up to 50 percent of whatever eligible expenses they provide to us. So if they have $100,000 worth of expenses, and we determine that all of those expenses are legitimate, we apply, we send that package of information to the North Carolina Rural Center, and then ask for 50 percent of that, or $50,000, we get a check of $50,000 and we pay WST, okay? And then, the next application may be the rest of the money, the $70,000, to complete all the work, or it might be another $100,000. Let's assume it's another $100,000, they're only going to get another $35,000 at that point to get it up to the $85,000. They're not going to get another $50,000 from the Rural Center, or from the Rural Center to the county, and the county to the company.
So regardless of what they spent, they get $35,000 in value?
They only get up to $85,000.
Right, you got $50,000 and then $35,000.
Well, I guess I'm a little concerned then, because the purchase price was 600-some thousand, but one of the charts in here showed that they were putting 1.14 million into it, so I guess I'm confused as to why the 85 is only, is only half of what they're renovating.
Remember, we talk about eligible expenses, they may be doing a lot of other things that just aren't eligible, and buying equipment, for instance, with this money is not considered to be eligible.
Are they expanding the facility, because that was not eligible either?
They were not, they're not expanding the facility, they're just reusing or retrofitting their facility.
Let me ask you a question on that.
They may expand it at some point, it is not their...
If the value of the building, this may be something that Mr. Branson may even comment on as well, if the value of the building currently is $528,000, and they are investing $1.1 million into the facility, and there's also a deed of trust to First Bank for $518,500 on the building, it seems like to me, and maybe it's my math, it seems like to me that the building is valued, with contents, will be valued in excess of $1 million, but the tax value is probably about half of that, according to our current tax listing, is, once the project is complete and they've got the hires and they've got the equipment in there, wouldn't it, I mean, once that kind of enhancement has been made, don't we reset the value of the building? I thought that we reset that and we taxed it at that level.
That's not my daily way.
No, I was just curious, maybe Mr. Branson's kind of, the reason I ask that is, it's relevant, because, you know, I just, for example, I just put a 12-by-12 building on my property and I expect that my taxes to go up, and I think they are.
Well, they will.
I'm sure they will. And I didn't invest a half a million onto it.
Yeah, everything we do at the tax office is as of January 1st of each year. So what we'll do is whenever they start these improvements to the building, we'll go out there and assess those improvements in accordance with the schedule of values that were adopted with the last rebound. So it's not necessarily the cost that they're going to put into the building, it is its contributory value. If you add a bathroom and it costs you, if you get one ceramic tile everywhere, you know, you spent $10,000 on a bathroom, you might not get that back out of it if you go to sell. you might not get that back out of it if you go to sell. So what we look at is the property holistically. So they're doing all these improvements, but what does it really add to the property? That's how we're going to approach it next January first.
And you will change the value until they get a CO, is that correct? Or if they do an interim on January first?
Well, and, you know, next January first is 2013, which is our next revow anyway, so it should be the market value at that time. Instead of market value as of January one oh seven, it'll be market value as of January one, 2013, next January.
When you say a CO, you're referring to, I mean, they're already in the building, operating there. So technically, they've got investment in there already.
That's right.
Whenever they finish these improvements.
When they finish, they'll still get a final certificate from the building inspector that the work is completed. And that certificate goes to the tax assessor.
So if they wait until after January the first, then they may be locked in at five-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, instead of one-point-one million?
That's right. And I want to use this as an extreme example, but just to let you know that there are different approaches, different appraisal approaches. With commercial and industrial property, we're hearing properties selling for pennies on the dollar. Well, if you buy this industrial plant for five dollars, you know, we've got a million dollars on it, that might not necessarily affect the tax value in the revow. What we look at with commercial properties, with industrial properties, is called the income approach. So if that property is still producing the same amount of income, January first, whenever we do the revaluation, even though it's sold for five dollars, its tax value might not change. Sales information is good to have with commercial and industrial property, but we look primarily to the income that the property can produce. And we capitalize that income into a value estimate. Just to let you know there are different approaches to the appraisal methodology.
Bob, was there a local realtor involved in the sale of this building?
Not sure.
In the effort of providing transparency, I guess I would like to know whether a local realtor did get a commission on the sale of this, because then they have four years and sales price was a lot less than what was on the books. So, you know, I just think that if there is a local realtor, and especially if that local realtor may be involved with the EDC and so on, I'm not saying that that's the case. I just think in transparency, it's always good to say, you know, a local realtor benefit from this sale, so.
Bob, I have one other point as well, because I'm glad that you...
You know, go ahead, because I'm going to make the motion that this be approved.
I just, one other point, and just in the interest of making sure everything's on the table. The, I noticed in here, and we talked about this, I think, back in August or September, where when WST's application was going forward, and then we had to revise it again, I think in November, because we needed to go from three to five percent on the match. I didn't have objection in principle to these rural economic development initiatives, because I think they're good. Like Mr. Reeves said, I think these are great things, they're coming down from the federal government, they're getting recycled, and we're getting a lot of benefit out of it. I guess the concern I have is making sure we do everything in accordance with the law, the letter of the law. And I see that the five percent match that we have to provide as a public entity, they created that in the general statutes, they created that match for a purpose, so that there's some skin in the game on the public sector. When the company then comes back and says, well, we're going to pay that five percent for you, that took the skin out of the game. And I just question whether or not that's legitimate, within the spirit and the intent of the law, and what we're trying to accomplish here in promoting economic growth in the county, that the intent was that the public sector should share in the burden, and should share in the investment in what's going to happen, what's going to transpire here. And I'm afraid that what we've done is we've kind of gamesmanship the situation, where we allow the company to pay the five percent, so we really don't have any burden. I just question whether that's legitimate.
We're on the hook for eighty-five thousand regardless.
Well, that's enough burden.
I know that, I'm just saying, but again, I'm going back to the law. I want to make sure that we're obeying the law, the spirit and the intent of the law, not just, you know, technicalities, just trying to work our way around and game the system.
Are we the first county to get this opportunity?
No, this firm has been around for a long time.
Good, then go talk to some of the others, find out what they've done, and if this seems right.
How long has WST been operating in Lee County?
I think it's actually been here probably close to seven years now.
June twelfth, two thousand and six.
Hey, Bob, one question, one question, clarification. We keep talking about the eighty-five thousand, but I see here on page forty-two, we've got another four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-four from the county. Is this a gift to them, or what?
No, that's, no, this is actually, this is actually what we're... And I'll tell you the way the rural center thinks about that. Then we need a mechanism for us to apply for these grants, okay? So you hire a grant writer and you go through that process. And we do that, I mean, we just, that's something, well, somebody's got to pay for that. Today, we do not have a fund in Lee County that allows us the option to go ahead and pay for that, for somebody to do that, or even for our staff to do that kind of thing. We don't have, we don't have that. So that's how we kind of justify, and that's really the cost of doing business, or the cost of getting a certification approved.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the grant agreement and the company's performance agreement as outlined here. And I'd like to take just a moment to speak on behalf of the other side. First, it looks like it's going to be a long year, the way this is getting started, for better or worse. I think that, to my mind, for capital improvements which will exceed one-million-one-hundred-thousand dollars, and with the, hopefully, returning economy and good fortunes, this company will continue to be here and will continue to grow and prosper, making this investment something that continues to be dividend-paying to the citizens of Lee County, and particularly to the employees, thirty-five, and to the additional twelve that we hope to, as a minimum, I hope to have employed there, and I hope it will be a great deal more than that. What concerns me, I think some of these questions are good and legitimate, but they are also, it looks to me like we are retrospectively picking and trying to sort of take this apart and put it back together. If there are any lessons to be learned in this, from this discussion, then I hope that next time something like this comes up, that we will yet again be alert to every turn of the screw, so that we get it right, and of course, are legal. But I think it would be totally inappropriate and totally out of the spirit of what we are about, trying to, at this time, benefit our county and, in good faith, complete this agreement, which we helped to be partners in back in August, and it came forward. So now is the time for us to step up and show that we are honorable and that we are not suspect of every dit and tittle that might possibly be considered in this kind of an agreement. So I think it's a good agreement, I think it's been done in good faith. I think that the EDC has been a part of this and brought it forward. I believe our county manager is comfortable with it, because it says, it's a recommendation here to approve. I would want to ask Mr. Crompton about, for this and for future agreements, about the burden on the county to keep up, to get the information that's necessary to make sure that the agreement is complete. Could you say that the chair lady said that that was a horrendous reporting responsibility? And I think it's probably less than horrendous, I think that's an exaggeration. Is this a problem any more than it has been in the past? And has it been a problem in the past? Or is it something that you more or less see as what has to be done in order for us to gain new business in Lee County?
Well, probably the latter, where I see it's, you know, what we have to do to gain business in Lee County. But I think if the board were to take a look at our success in grant agreements recently, and we're getting ready to discuss another one with the North Carolina Rural Center, you know, grant administration in the future, the board's going to have to really take a good, hard look at. If we're going to continue to be aggressive in retaining grants, whether it be through economic development, or through the sheriff's department, or any other department, you can ask Lisa's group. The reporting requirements are more and more being laid on the local governments to report back to the state. It's being transferred from them to us. So I would tell you that it's becoming a burden in that it's becoming a cumulative effect on the staff, and trying to keep them all straight is becoming more and more of a burden. But, you know, it's things we've got to do to get the job done and create growth and other things in the county.
One other comment, Mr. Hughes. I want to thank you for your continued perseverance of this type of thing. This is what EDC and you and we should be about, to bring in, to increase bringing in business and new jobs. And I would want to say for the record that the word incentive is not a bad word. And there is that sort of sense around here in this setting that perhaps it is. I think it's all relative to the world in which we live. And so I would ask you to not hesitate to say incentive. And we'll work through that equation and conundrum as we need to. So thank you for all you continue to do.
Well, thank you for the support also.
John, have you seen a copy of the Architectural Drawing Convention?
Of this building, no ma'am.
Okay. And how much staff time do you anticipate would be needed to go through all the invoices that WST has to give us, and for it to compare to the architectural drawing, and to compare to what's exempt and what's not exempt before we ever break down that report and send it to the rural center to get approved?
About five minutes.
About five minutes?
I would, I'd have to think about the architectural drawing. I'm not, I didn't remember seeing anything in here about us going back to the architectural drawing.
But we do have to certify that all of these invoices that they're giving to us are actually paid and is eligible. And is WST a licensed North Carolina general contractor? Will they be providing any of these construction services themselves? Because there were some stipulations for that situation.
They're good, some of those, I'm not sure we're going to work through to see whether or not any of that is eligible, but we'll work through all that. Honestly, it will not take that long. It is not that complicated a program. And I don't believe, while the county is on the hook, if they go belly up and they can't find eighty-five thousand dollars in that building, or whatever the guarantees offer, we've got, we'll have some issues there, but they...
The bank has a note on it for five-hundred-and-some thousand, so we would be down the line.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't...
I think there's value there, and I think the company's been in business long enough where we shouldn't worry about all of those things. I think the attorneys have done their job, and they're reviewing those documents coming straight from the North Carolina Rural Center that have worked in many, many other communities. It's actually the nicest program that we have out there to help communities build buildings, or rebuild buildings that are out there that haven't been used. And that's what we're doing in this case.
And I love that program, and I'll say for the record that Bill is one of my favorite and most respected entrepreneurs in Lee County. My problem is, when the application came to us, we never saw the level of detail and the liability that the county would be incurring in the reporting. And so going forward, it would be a really good idea for us to have that before we sign off on an application to apply for the loan. I don't like all these details, and I may be speaking for myself, but I don't like to be blindsided with all these details at the time of signing.
I think you have a boilerplate of a document that the standard operating procedure put in the North Carolina Rural Center. This is the same thing that would come the next time we come to this, and go through this process. Same type of document, the numbers and the company would change. The process of all of this, it's a state of flux. You know, we do the pre-application, you then do an application. If the rural center thinks it could be a good project, and if they have money that they can make available for such a project, we then do the application, you do the resolution. We may not have all those numbers together, but at the time we do the application and what goes before the board, that's when we actually make the request for the company that says they're going to create this many jobs, and this is what they're eligible for. Is that something that you can approve? If they approve it, then we start a whole new train of documents, which is what you have in front of you now.
Speaking of, you made a point, one of the fine print items in there is if the rural center doesn't have these funds after the fact, that they're out of their part of the bargain. So is it possible that we could have dispersed funds on this?
No, we will never disperse funds until we receive funds from the rural center. They will never make an obligation if they don't know they have the money. So they, at the time that that board met and approved this particular application, they knew they had the money to pay for it, okay? Now, they might be getting some more money if some of these companies aren't following through on their jobs and they're having to pay money back on those. You know, but that's additional monies that they would have.
Let me ask, as a part of the agreement, as I was listening, I'm getting either lost or more confused. But if we have obligations with, in this document that we have to provide to the rural center, my expectation is that's what the company is going to provide us. We simply pull together a form, this is what we need, you provide it, or we don't sign off on any checks.
That's correct.
Well, then I don't see a complicated situation unless we make it more complicated. And I'm hopeful that...
We could.
Beg your pardon?
We could make it more complicated.
Not if the vote is right. But I will say to you that I'm hopeful that the small business arena won't think that we're going to make such a hassle out of it that it's not beneficial to even try to get a loan from us. I love the idea that people come in with questions about what we do and how we do it. I'm fine with that. But I also feel that once legal has reviewed it, once the manager and the finance director have given it their blessings, that comes a point in time we got to turn it loose and let it go.
Call the question, please.
A motion has been made. Anybody who has not been involved in the discussion wants to say a thing.
I still got one comment.
Okay.
Is it short?
No. Because it's been going a while. I just want to remind everyone that I think, and I made this point before, we really need to obey the spirit and the intent of the law when we do these things. And it ought to be very clear, when you stand before us and you present a package for our approval, that we understand under what general statute we're approving. And in this case, you're acting as if it's an economic development initiative, and we haven't had a public hearing, and we haven't followed board policy to wait after the public hearing, one meeting, to take our vote. If this is, if you're coming before us as a community development proposal, where we don't require a public hearing, then it ought to be stated, stipulated that way. And then I think we ought, we've got an organization and a delineated level of responsibility that Mr. Bridwell ought to be here to speak to it. I mean, we've got people that are assigned and paid to do these kinds of functions, and I don't like this morphing business where we slide left and right in the general statutes. I think we need to know under what authority are we acting before we take a vote.
Okay, motion has been made to approve the grant agreement and company performance agreement as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Who are the ayes? Mr. Reeves? So you got the ayes and the nays?
Let me ask this question before you, or you want me to leave? You got another, you got another question here. Let me ask counsel, you know, I said to the manager first thing this morning, after saying Happy New Year, it appears that we're headed for another, what was that?
Train wreck.
Groundhog, no, groundhog day. More of what I just went through last year. At some point in time, I feel that we have a duty and obligation to respect the opinion of our legal staff. And so I would ask that you, at some point, at the hearing needs kind... Commissioner Womack seemed to suggest that we might not be doing something correct. Do you have an opinion, or have you reviewed this document?
Yes, sir, I have.
Let me hear it, please.
In my view, this action is being taken under 158-7.1A. That provision of the law does... That provision of the law does not require public hearings. Section 158-7.1B lists specific economic incentives that do require public hearings. This is not one of those, in my view. Both Professor Lawrence, formerly of the Institute of Government, and Professor Mulligan advise local governing bodies to strongly consider conducting public hearings even though they are not required. The reason that suggestion is made is to bolster the determination that the incentive is being provided for a public purpose. In the Moretti case, as you know, we've discussed this before, the court pointed out that the strict procedural requirements for economic incentives were taken in those cases, even though some of them did not fall under subsection B. Both Professor Lawrence and Professor Mulligan believe that if a public body does conduct a public hearing, that gives the public body additional evidence and support to argue that the purpose was a public purpose. But as far as a public hearing being required by the law, neither case law, in my opinion, or the statutory law require that.
That sounds fine. I just cite for you the page that he gave us on our December the 13th orientation. He didn't equivocate about whether it was A or B. He said, yes, public hearing required. And he made that point, and he didn't differentiate when he gave us that two-hour orientation. That's the reason I, you know, the guy that gets paid by the general, by the school of government to be the requisite authority or the recognized authority on this stuff, when he tells us, he didn't differentiate A and B. When he tells us one thing, I take it literally. And that's not to say that you aren't correct, it's just to say that I'm going with the last information I had.
I'm going you. We pay you.
He flies.
Well, he's also the one on the county payroll. What would a public hearing have done in terms of time?
I guess in this case, when we did the resolution, that might have been the timeframe to hold a public hearing if the board chose to do that. Time-wise, between the time you turn in the application and the time the board, the North Carolina Rural Board approves it or disapproves it, takes action on it, that's usually a good thirty days, so you've got time to take care of that.
I don't oppose public hearing. And you know, I think in the future, whether to make a policy or not, EDC and others ought to consider the fact that, I think the majority of the board would rather see public hearings or have them as a part of any agreement. That's just one manly thing.
And I think, you know, I really like this type of economic development, you know, community development aspect part of it. My whole concern is I'm not comfortable taking on eighty-five thousand dollars worth of risk to the taxpayers. And so I think in the future, you know, when these come before us, if we could have some kind of a, you know, a red flag to us, that if there are any risks involved with taxpayer dollars, that at least we disclose that and, you know, highlight that. So that's my main concern. Otherwise, I love the company, I love the people who own it, and I like the idea of investing in a community, but it's the risk that I'm not comfortable with.
Anytime you borrow money, you've got a risk. I don't care if it's a public or private. You borrow money, there's a risk.
You've got a risk anytime you come and sit at this table.
That's right. That's true too.
You don't want the risk, don't run.
Yes, there.
All right. Bob, are you up next?
I'll get you a couple of leaners and cars.
That was a warm-up.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of a grant agreement from one North Carolina fund for Zern Industries.
You remember the project, thank you, you remember the project that this board approved a couple of months ago, I guess October the 10th. We approved the county authorizing incentive to Zern Industries for the creation of thirty-eight jobs. This is part of a program, the one North Carolina grant is part of a program that the government has in her bailiwick to provide additional dollars that have to be matched locally. So, again, they want counties and communities to have skin in the game. If they want the governor involved to bring additional dollars to the table to get a company to make decisions to be here, then they want the county to have skin in the game, or the local community have skin in the game. In this case, we approved, this board approved funding a grant of thirty-eight thousand dollars. In this case, I believe the paperwork shows, although we initially started at forty, I believe the paperwork that you have before you from Department of Commerce, and this is a North Carolina Department of Commerce program that the governor handles, I think those numbers show thirty-eight thousand dollars as well. This is probably the same paperwork, except the difference in the name of the company and the number of dollars involved that this county board looked at for the Caterpillar project. So you should be familiar with that. I think some of you like that part of it. In this case, the company will provide us information that will tell us definitively the number of jobs that they've added, and they're applying for that number of jobs or that amount of money based on the number of jobs. So typically works, if it's a large amount, you're talking about companies that might twenty-five, twenty-five percent of the jobs created make an application for payment. I see this project working such that they probably won't even talk to us until all thirty-eight jobs have been created. And then we'll facilitate the application to the state, and then the state will ask us some additional questions verifying that those jobs have been created and that the local grant has been provided to the company as well.
And in addition to that, there are ninety-five jobs that are in a steady state? Is that correct?
Yes. It was around a hundred, it was around a hundred, but I don't know what that document is.
Ninety-five, that's good.
So that's the baseline they're working off. That's correct.
And I remember we went to some lengths earlier to say that, and I see it spelled out, I just wanted to reiterate here that these are new jobs.
Yes.
They are on top of what they are bringing to the area.
That's correct.
And there can't be any switching back and forth. Each one will have a tracker on it and will know the progress of that job, and that's part of the fulfillment of this agreement.
That's correct.
Is this a mechanism that they're going to use to report their employment numbers to us periodically?
It's that NC 101 form. And that's the form that the company has to provide to the Employment Security Commission, now under Department of Commerce, to show the total number of jobs that they've had and the wages that they pay for unemployment insurance purposes, so they get billed for those unemployment insurance, for the unemployment insurance that they're responsible for.
Does that 101 form also identify the hourly wage rate?
It's been a while since I've looked at that form. I don't know if they break it or not. It may be total wages for that quarter. It's a quarterly report. So I think it's total wages for that quarter. And I think it actually goes to the extent of naming the person and identifier for that person.
You know, the reason I ask is because part of the reporting requirement on page seventy-seven is this package we have here required that they have to identify the average hourly wage to be eligible for the payment. And I want to make sure that we had a mechanism to capture that info.
We'll ask them to certify that, however they want to do it. And then if we're not satisfied, we can go back and talk to them again and see what other information they have that can help us certify it.
Is that also an opportunity perhaps for you to sit down with Employment Security Commission on that 101 form, let them give you a brief summary or provide us a written summary?
Of what's on that form?
Yeah, what it does.
Yes, yes. I can do that. There are issues of confidentiality, and that's why the waivers in there on that previous one. But there are issues of confidentiality. It used to be that, many, many years ago, we had access to that. We could actually ask for that information. That's no longer possible.
Actually, there are county managers and commissioners who are doing that. John and I verified that at one of the last NCACC, that part of most of the other county's standard incentive agreements is they're getting verification of those jobs from their local Employment Security Commission, correct, John?
Yeah, they must get that waiver form signed for each one. I think the wages, based on the terms of the one North Carolina grant on page eighty-one, they must be reported weekly because the average weekly wage is a requirement under the terms of the agreement. So I would think on that form so that it can be comparable. Otherwise, they wouldn't have put it in here in this form.
I noticed in the one North Carolina, part of my hesitation originally was there was very little of any capital investment involved. I noticed in the one North Carolina fund agreement, it refers to a target investment of forty thousand dollars. So do we know that?
About their target, because originally it was twenty thousand.
Yeah, it was like eighteen thousand and twenty, yeah. So they've doubled it now to forty thousand. Has a nice new car somewhere.
So what if they, if our tax records show they don't invest that? I mean, is that moot point or what?
It says the target new jobs goal and the target new investment goal is forty thousand, and I believe there are clawbacks for both. Matter of fact, there's a calculation is if they don't hit the target and they hit a smaller number, there's a calculation whereby you reduce the amount of the incentive. And then that's what, the difference is what they would owe you back.
For the capital investment part or what else?
Yes, ma'am. The calculation's in the contract. I can't remember what page it was on, but I was reading that today.
But in the contract that we have with you, Bob, it's not in there, is it?
It's on page sixty-seven.
It's on our jobs.
Yeah. It's not in our contract, it's on the state's contract. It actually starts on page sixty-six. It says adjustments to grant at closeout. And it makes an adjusted grant amount based on the new jobs actually created versus the required new jobs. And then it makes an adjustment on the original, on the investment actually made versus the required investment.
To be honest with you, I seriously doubt you could hire thirty-eight new people and not have an investment of forty thousand dollars for production purposes, so I don't think that that...
It's not production, they're warehousing.
Well, warehousing or whatever. The point is, is that it's highly unusual to have that unless they were downsizing elsewhere and the net was less than forty K. That doesn't trouble me as much on the investment part as the fact that I think we might have used token language about investment just to get around Moretti on this incentive package. And that's what it sounds like to me, that we were just using that language to avoid, you know, they could go to another state, they're going to make a token investment in the county, and they're going to create thirty-eight jobs, so it's really about jobs. Not that jobs, jobs are a great thing, it's just that I think that we might be, we might be dancing around the Moretti case to authorize a grant like this.
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Okay.
They approve the grant agreement, the company performance agreement as per said in this board.
Motion has been made to approve the grant agreement as well as the company performance agreement. Any further discussion?
I just have one question. Bob, on one point three, or page sixty-three, said must create thirty-eight new jobs, and it said earlier in one of the things that may think, the ninety-five jobs. Is there a specific time period there? Is that period up to October fourteenth, two thousand fourteen? Is that the time period they have to maintain those jobs? Or do we have that specification?
They have, they have up to two years to create those jobs.
Create, okay. So how long do they have to maintain them afterwards?
October fourteenth, two thousand fourteen.
What I was asking is that, what the...
They have to, they have to create them by when? And then they have...
They create them at whatever pace they want, according to this agreement. They can create if they don't collect the money for each job until they've created the job.
That's correct.
That's right.
The reason mostly is that you can do it all on October fourteenth.
You can do it all on October fourteenth and fire them on the fifteenth.
Well, at least they would have met the obligation.
True. Thing is, though, if you're looking for people being put to work, though, you know, they could skate around that pretty easily, work in Caterpillar. We did have a specific time period.
People are looking for a way to skate around this agreement.
I agree with you, Doc. I think, I think it's a legitimate, it's a legitimate attempt to secure some funding for creating jobs, which I think they knew they were going to create here, but that's beside the point. It's legit. I mean, there's no question that they've created the necessary legitimate documentation to put this forward.
They're transferring from a New York or...
Yeah, from a New York, from a New York office.
I would feel a lot better if I knew that all those people are going to live or rent or buy in Lee County. We can't...
Can't do that.
I'd feel much better if they just said, you know, we want to come to Lee County, help us with our transfer costs. I probably would have been the first time ever I would have said yes on the paper.
And I'll tell you, they're not, they're not sitting by. They've posted wanted ads on the internet, I see them on Google and all these web pages. They're actively trying to hire into some high-tech positions out there. It's our elevated position. So there's no question, Zern's sincere in this thing.
Call a question, please.
Okay. Motion has been made. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Boy, three again. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll look forward to those detailed reports that the EDC is going to do on both of the two, okay?
Is there anything else on the agenda?
Never know. Just saying. Take the lead.
Okay. New business. Next on the agenda is two thousand eleven Community Development Block Grant Program.
Lucky day to be making you all happy and had a public hearing. Today's public hearing is for the two thousand eleven round of funding through the Department of Commerce Community Development Block Grant. As you know, the county receives funds in a three-year cycle. The last project we received was a two thousand eight scattered site project, and we're due for two thousand eleven funds. You have a handout in your package on page eighty-five and eighty-six that talks about all the programs that are available for this funding opportunity and describes them in detail. Part of the requirements through the grant and through the Community Investment and Assistance Division is to conduct two public hearings for grant applications. Today's is public hearing number one. Our ultimate goal is to come back to, to see you in February for public hearing number two and be very specific about our grant application. And right now, we are going for scattered site housing, which you are familiar with that. Another conversation I would like to have with you today is we need someone to represent the county on the selection committee. It can be a commissioner, it can be a county employee, it can be a nonprofit or a citizen you know that would work well on that selection committee that helps us with the grant application. And at your next meeting, you will have a contract approving Wooton's contract services for assisting in writing the application that you approved in December. And Mr. Talbot has already begun, and you have that contract.
I need to, do you have a question? Because I haven't declared the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. I gotta head my stuff.
That's the first round.
I just, curious, I was looking now through that. You said scattered site housing. Who makes the determination whether that's the best thing to do or infrastructure hookup or those kinds of things, Karen?
Right now, it's your community development staff, based on the needs we know that are out there. Scattered site housing has been a recurring project, but we have a wonderful waiting list of people to pick from. It can be for several things, acquisition, relocation. However, we do look at these categories, and being the grant administrator, I always know they're out there. So if you know of a project, feel free to share that with me at any time that might fit in one of these. The catalyst program, the division, has still not, although it's an opportunity, they haven't put their final grant guidelines out there for that.
Thank you.
Category that, just a second. Category that caught my eye is infrastructure.
Ah.
Have we ever used these community development block grants for infrastructure, water, sewer?
Not say in the last ten years. With the county and the city's contract for water and water lines and things like that that are out there, we sometimes have had a hard time, we being the city and the county, qualifying for this application based on the lowest of the lowest income in the areas that have need... based on the lowest of the lowest income in the areas that have need for water lines and/or sewer lines. So, we've had a hard time meeting that percentage criteria. But we, you know, we'll certainly look at anything if you, we even tried for South Plank Road when we worked on Mr. Pascal for a long time, trying to get that through CDBG and we just couldn't meet that criteria.
So, so does it have to be one specific road or can you have additional roads? Let's say like South Franklin Drive.
If the residents along the road or the line that would be serviced by the line meet the income, then it would be sufficient. Hookup is totally different. Hookup is if the county or the city had put in a water line or sewer line and the people just couldn't afford to hook up to it.
Yeah.
But they still would have that income percentage. And right now, we don't have any lines that are just laying on the ground where people are not accessing right now because of that. Um, not by a total, by a total percentage of their income if we came in. It could, it's not based on one person, based on a group of people.
Okay, so if one person on the road or two, two or three people on the road couldn't hook up, you can do it.
Yeah, and we get a lot of requests for that at the city, excuse me.
I wanna echo one thing that Madam Chair just brought up, and that is, and I'm going back to a primer on economic development from Mac Holliday down in Atlanta. And, and I remembered him specifically saying that one of the, one of the, the most precious things you can do as elected officials is to invest in your infrastructure. And I know that there's been a lot of discussion of late, particularly the city of Sanford, about their, their water, I'm sorry, their sewer expansion and selling sewer capacity to Chatham County. And I just, I wanna echo the sentiment that the one thing that county commissioners ought to be united as a front to do is to improve the infrastructure potential of this county so that we can attract new business, particularly larger businesses and well-paying businesses. We, that's one thing that we are chartered to do and that the general statutes allow for and that are, that are imperative that we do in order to, to promote and encourage economic growth in the county. It's one of the seven guidelines that Mac tells all of his clients all over the country. And I think that we oughta, we oughta, we oughta redouble our effort to try to, to persuade the authorities in Raleigh that, that these block grants ought to be with, our first look ought to be investing in infrastructure.
We got areas in the county that don't have access to public-
You got it. In fact, there's, there's several out in the district that have been wanting to get into water. And, and you know, it just, it just, it strikes me that we ought to be making that our first look for infrastructure investments rather than economic development incentives. I think that's where the money is much better spent in that area and our effort and our, and our time spent on infrastructure investment.
And being the grant administrator for some of these funds, what I rely on a lot of times is your division that Mark Clark's in. I can't think what the name of that is right now.
General Services.
Yeah. Um, you know, sometimes if they know of an area, they bring it to my attention. I'll always walk down the hall and ask Mr. Zar, you know, what's going on in the city with water and sewer lines? But sometimes I'm not familiar with the county lines and the issues that are going on, or residents, like you said, that don't know about that. So, feel free to call me about that. If, if there are people in South Franklin, we would have to look at it as a group and not just to-
That's a big problem because there is a big development out there where the developer bought their-
Right.
-rights to have water and sewer, but a lot of the lower-income people couldn't afford it and then the city said, "Well, we ran out of money," so.
Karen, again, what's the timeframe? And the purpose of these public hearings is to let the citizens know what categories are available and to allow for them to have input on what their perception of the needs are in the county. So, this committee you referred to is not gonna meet before the second hearing, right?
It may, if I get my people in place. It's, it's not necessarily to get your citizen, you know, citizens, we welcome a citizen that's interested and involved. The true intent is the application's due the end of March, so we'll have to have a second public hearing. We'll have to have at least one meeting with that selection committee to see if they have any input on areas. But what I spoke about earlier is the good thing is the waiting list we have is just phenomenal. You know, we just did a round for urgent repairs, so I know the rehab needs that are out there right now. And we always advertise for that information.
See, our citizens probably aren't gonna be aware of these various categories until after the meeting today. Where's Billy? He'll redo a good job of reporting that, right? And so, what I'd like for them to be able to do, though, is to either attend the meeting or whatever so that they really do have a chance to give their perceptions and their ideas on what the needs are. Because it may be different from those at the elected officials.
I'll tell you some information I'd like to have, John, you might have to hear this, but I know there's actually some state roads in the county where we have the right of way. We do not have water lines down those lines. In fact, I live on one of them.
Yep.
And there's at least fifteen families down there.
Yeah, Pickard Village and that one.
Yeah. And, you know, and I know there's some instances where we ran the water lines where the county was putting in the water lines, where we actually stopped at one area, and I don't know why they've done this, and, and then they didn't connect it. Plank Road Ventures.
Yep.
Well, I'm sure the city would love to see us loop some of these lines so they're not blowing water out at the end where we have, where we have come to an end like, you know, Sou- North Plank Road. We, General Services does have maps where all the water lines are in the county and where they're not. And if you want to, we can, we can bring those maps to you and we can meet on it and show you exactly where they are and where they aren't. One of the interesting things with selling the system to the city is if we wanted to go to, say USDA Rural Development right now and get a, and get a loan to extend water lines out in the county, it's gonna be a difficult process since we don't own the system.
I was gonna say, your bet bet is to meet with the city.
Right.
Yeah.
And the thing with the city is they're not eligible for the USDA Rural Development money extended those lines.
But I think there is a provision for us to request it, we just have to have their collaboration and cooperation.
Just a partnership agreement.
Yeah.
And as a grant person, I love to write grants. I love to get all the money out there and get, and I will get you to everything. So, if you know of one you want me to write, I will write it, it's your honor, and I will administer it.
She enjoyed that discussion earlier about all these grants.
Well, yeah, if I get you a grant, you're liable.
And I'll tell you another one. As a general rule, at the state and federal levels, they like water projects. They like them. Those, those usually get a very favorable consideration if they're well-done.
Yeah, they do.
Well, they're, they are expensive, but you know, if you can get one sold, you know.
And they're used to having the jobs, though, I think, so if you have a company who needs it or whatever. Before I actually call the public hearing into session, if there's some citizens who have some questions or wanna be involved in this committee if it meets before the second hearing, can you?
They can call me at seven seven five eight two three eight.
Seven seven five.
Seven seven five eight two three eight.
Okay.
Is this part of your public service announcement?
It is. I can dance to it.
That's a good question.
Actually, I was thinking quite.
Yes.
If you wanna dance, go ahead. I was thinking that the city has a, a public service announcement that goes on quite frequently and maybe that could be a part of-
I can put something on the Channel Eleven for Selection Committee.
Or, instead of a question related to the newspaper also, if this committee does meet before, just so, you know, if there are some citizens who actually do have some good ideas, and I'm sure many of them do, that they can pass that on. Okay, I guess I need to-
I think that one other thing that ought to be mentioned is that your needs may be as great as someone else's who's already applied, so if you are not accepted or turned down, you need to understand there's a list, a continuous list that grows on every basis. And we have to be fair at all.
Okay, so now I will officially declare the public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to authorize the staff to move forward with the application process. Any of those wishing to speak in favor?
I'm Keith Clark, and as far as I know, I still live at two twelve Acorn Drive here in Sanford. Madam Chairman, I think that you are, should be commended for suggesting that the public needs to give you input into which of these categories the money ought to be invested. And that's what I like to speak to at this time. The question has, I'd like to say first, in terms of applying for these grants, that I'm a taxpayer. My money goes to a number of places. It comes here, it goes to the capital, state capital, and it goes in substantial amount to the federal government. Now, when this money is offered back to Lee County, some part of it, teeny, teeny tiny, as it may be, and a part of it that's paid by every other taxpayer, is just our money coming back to us. The federal government, I guess, can print money, but the state doesn't get any money to spend that we, the taxpayers, don't spend for. And there was once an effort, North Carolina, to look at the per capita amount we were getting in domestic assistance and the amount we were paying in. And as a result of, uh, this was so June forty years ago, that the state was short about three point four billion dollars in getting its fair share back. An effort was undertaken that, in one year, brought back a hundred and nineteen million in nineteen seventy-four dollars to the state. So, it is, I think, important for you to give the time for consideration to these things. But I also feel that it seems that there, there should be no resistance. There should not be the appearance of resistance and bureaucratic red tape to bringing this money back, my money, back here to help me and my family and all the other people in this community. Now, in terms of whether we should, I believe the important question here was suggested by Commissioner Womack. And that was whether the categories here, one of which I understand is infrastructure and one of which I understand is distributed, where'd she go? Distributed, what's that called? You saw it, what you're doing now?
Regionally and on a three-year cycle base.
No, I'm sorry, you called category, scattered.
Scattered site housing.
Scattered housing. I think that was an alternative put forward to scattered housing. And I think it was put forward on the basis of an argument that it would be a way to attract business and that, that would be better to do than to use, possibly be better, to use that rather than the scattered approach, which helps individuals directly. This would be a proposal to build infrastructure, which would then be done in the process of attracting industry and then therefore it would trickle down eventually to the individuals. So, I would like to express my opinion that I believe that the, there are several reasons that are, speak to the needs of the scattered approach. One is the approach which was, which was indicated in the presentation, that doing these infrastructure projects are, this, this is a program that is means-tested. It relates to the amount of income. And so, this does present some barriers to qualifying for infrastructure development and also there's some barriers because of city-county cooperation or lack thereof. That, that is a problem. Now, it was suggested by Commissioner Womack that this would be a better attraction than incentives. Now, I'd like to speak to that particular point that he raised and indicate that in the investment of this particular money, I believe it would be better to go directly to the individuals and to help our community and help those individuals if they spruce up their homes and they're responsible individuals. And I don't believe people wanna live in, in junkyards and stuff. If they can help the people who need help getting in their homes, to get in their homes, I'm all for it. I'm not far from needing it. My concern too about, we have to consider the question, which was raised by Mr. Womack, about whether this is, block grants is a better way than incentives. I do not believe that it is.
Madam Chair, Mr. Clark has been speaking for the typical five minutes. You have the discretion to allow him for more time.
I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a, a limit on, on five minutes, but, so I'll just make my final point. I think the thing that would be most helpful in attracting industry is two things. One, a governing body that looked like, sounded like, and acted like it wanted businesses to come here. And number two, that made sure that our schools here would be the kind of place that everybody would want to bring their children to and use computers in the classroom, not chalk and erasers. Thank you very much.
Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? Karen, the scattered house, how, those are actually loans that are paid back, right?
I can speak to that.
Okay. Is there anybody wishing to speak either for or against? The hearing is closing, final questions?
Let's talk about scattered site housing, which is the category I said we were shooting for writing an application. That truly is, the recipient is a citizen for housing rehabilitation or possibly purchasing their houses completely deteriorated and helping them find a new home. That is specific to the recipient and that is the category which we are looking at writing an application for this time. But still welcome comments on any of the other categories or any suggestions if you'd like us to write one for those.
Now, if I remember right, there's actually, that's actually a loan, though, and there is an encumbrance on their real estate until what?
Let's take housing rehab for an example. Say I spend fifty-five thousand dollars on your home. There is, it is called a deferred loan. There's no longer a such thing as a grant. When I proceed to get the bids and find out what that amount's gonna be on your house, you will sign a note of deed of trust that has a deferred percentage annually for, say, eight to ten years. And so, should you sell the house or something happen within eight to ten years, you do pay the county back, and I will say.
After that eight to ten years is forgiven?
It goes away, it's forgiven.
Any other questions?
Just one informational item. I, help me understand how we may be in a competitive or collaborative relationship with the Sanford Housing Authority or their independent arm that does-
In this particular, we are not.
We are not, so are we-
What you may be talking about is the new tax credit.
Right, are we, are we collaborative with them in any way on these programs? Because I know they do, they get-
Sometimes they will get me citizens to go on the waiting list that they know may have a Section Eight home or things like that, but not a lot. No, it's not for any other reason than that they just don't matter.
So, under these, under these scattered site housing, we are not in competition in any way, shape, or form for, for monies that they would also be seeking?
No, this money goes specifically to the county of Lee.
Okay.
They also have their own nonprofit platform.
Right, right, that's what I was referring to, was the nonprofit.
Right.
Is there anybody on this board who wants to volunteer for the committee that she spoke to earlier? Ms. Pascal?
Good.
I'll help you before.
Okay.
Slide drive on. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we've been waiting here patiently, County Roads and Bound Drapery. Karen. And you're on page eighty-eight of our agenda packet.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Happy New Year. Yeah, the item that was on your agenda packet is about the five and six mile insurance districts for Lee County Fire Protection. And hopefully you have a better copy than that than I do, a color copy. While this is being brought to you or while it was on the agenda, we're in the process of trying to maximize the substations. And as part of that, we discovered a glitch in the software. In particular with Tramway, the way the software worked, it would show that the fire truck would have to come out, go north on US one to the stoplight and come back down. It didn't recognize any of the crossovers. Don Kay discovered that, and so we were able to correct that and actually will impact the Villanow subdivision in a positive way. We'll move back-
Except for my house of the area.
You gotta move a little bit closer. We're getting closer to you, so.
Just want people to know that I had nothing to do with it.
No, you did not. This was something that started with the Fire Advisor Board to maximize the substations and we hope to bring that to you at a later date. But what we can do right now with redoing the maps was, we can fix this because it's already in the- in the Tramway Fire Department. So this is just a correction that you guys need to sign off on the map and we send it to the State Fire Marshal's office and that'll help those folks, uh, on the backside of Lake Villanow. Uh, because, yeah, like I said, it was a glitch. Um, it was not recognizing any of the crossovers on US one. It was making you go to a stoplight. And it was about a half mile extra route. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I would, I would.
I'd like to get a helicopter.
I have real concern about this big red area up here. It must be off of the bike, north of the bike.
Yeah, that's, that's, I didn't know we had that big of an area.
You can use mine. Probably talking about lower Moncrief.
That's six mile. That's out...
Isn't that what that is, lower Moncrief?
Where, where are you at?
Yeah, right.
Northeastern quadrant, second district.
We are, okay. What that is is currently, what you're seeing on your map, the red and the purple are what we're trying to address in our next set of maps. And that affects actually moving fire districts. Uh, the one you're seeing there, that's, um, with the new Deep River Substation, we'll be able to pull all that in to Deep River.
Okay, so this is currently as, without the new substation being approved?
Right, because you're talking about moving district lines there and that's a whole different ballgame. So all we're doing today is fixing Lake Valina, Valina, Villanow. Um, because it's already in the Tramway District and we're not talking about any district lines. But when we get done and bring the, the maps that we're working on, basically, all the red will go away.
Okay.
There won't be any red.
You're talking about just in second district there? You're not talking about on the, on the screens?
There won't be any red in Lee County.
Really?
When we get done.
There will be twelve unprotected.
And they're not in Lee County. They're actually in Harnett County, but the only way to get to them is from Lee County side. But when we get done with the maps and bring them to you, but it has financial impact to some of the fire departments, both positive and negative. So that's, we're not ready for that, but that map you're seeing, the purple and the red will be, all the red will go away because we did find another glitch that can't be addressed today was with Carolina Trace Fire Department's addresses, thirty-seven Indian Trail. So as far as the software can, um, does it, it comes out, comes all the way through Carolina Trace and get out on eighty-seven. We redone that where it just now goes out eighty-seven. So, but, um, that'll be addressed with that little bit of Cherokee Trail and then the red and the purple will reduce drastically. All the red will go away and the purple will be minimized. So we're talking about a couple hundred homes. When we get done, we're not there yet. We met with Don K Friday morning and gave him some more guidelines because we're trying to do this where it has the least impact on the fire departments that are being negatively impacted. Just...
Have a trivia question, but, um, do the routes that the fire, um, departments follow, is that, um, programmed? Is it GPS, uh, or can they? In other words, I suppose, when you said crossovers, I wondered if they could, with a messed up computer, uh, fail to take the most efficient turn to get to a fire?
Absolutely.
They, they could?
They can.
They can?
That's why this process is taking a little longer to do this is because we're trying to make sure that we have, yeah, when we, when we come to you with new maps or new district lines, we only want to do it one time and where we have maximized, you know, the benefit of all the substations and main stations. But, you know, we found the trace in the Tramway, but Don's also, he's actually had to manually do to make sure there's anything that's, like I said, we've eliminated all the reds so now we're just trying to minimize the amount of purple, which is the focus between that six and five.
Let me just ask that a slightly a different way. Do we rely both city or county, to your, to the best of your knowledge, on the driver just knowing the way as opposed to you have got to go down here and take a right? So what is that? I'm just curious.
Yes, we rely on...
I've never thought about it before.
The driver, none of our trucks are...
A lot of the trucks have GPS in them, but I will tell you this, is the, the driver's responsibility is getting the truck to the fire. And I'll go back to when I started in the fire service in ninety-one. I had a captain that he would crawl out. He would call straight out. You had to give the low number, the high number and all the cross streets on that street. And we drilled on the streets day after day after day. And it's the same way with the fire parks in the county, but there's always a human error.
Yeah, sure.
We had a structure fire Sunday morning before last, a kitchen fire. And a truck went the wrong direction. And a lot of it has to do with confusion out there with the bypasses being cut in at four twenty-one to Comeon Road. Uh, so the truck from Northview actually beat in the truck. It was coming from the substation. But Sanford was closer just because it's a cut-in. So there's always human error in fact, initially.
That's why you'll hear, I know in, in Cape Fear District, we had the same thing with the bypass. Rice Road used to be a loop road and you'll hear it dispatched out and you'll hear the drivers a lot of time ask you, is it the East Lee side or the Davenport side? Same thing with like popular Springs Church Road. It runs, it connects to Avens Ferry at both ends. So we would usually try to ask if it's, you know, the river end. So the drivers try to find the most direct route, but...
Yeah, I understand.
There is human error, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Let me ask a question though. Uh, when you get these lines redrawn, I understand it's going to affect some of the revenue for some of the departments, but it'll also affect the insurance plates on some of their citizens, right? And should be looking at a little reduction making the insurance?
Um, yeah, we can cut, just preliminary. Um, don't hold me to this because Don K's gonna do the final. But we're talking about, right now there are roughly over four hundred structures that are shown outside of six miles. And when he says structures, I don't know, I can't, right now we can't tell whether it's a house or a barn. He hasn't gone to all that detail. They'll be inside of a six. We can reduce that down to twelve structures. And then moving from six into a six to five mile, uh, we're talking about another six hundred. So a thousand structures will be impacted. But yes, it will have a negative impact on two districts, um, because they're losing the bulk of the district right now. And it'll have a positive impact on two other districts. And we hope to have the maps and the data here shortly in the next few months.
Well, I want to thank you for catching this and whatever because it is going to make a difference. So I'm, I serve on that Fire Advisory Board. I'm just very impressed with all the work you guys put into it. The new board that has the makeup is now, I think it's going to be a very good board. We need, I need a motion to approve the revised maps.
Move.
The ma, is the move goes with the RSI?
Aye.
Closing A. Um, just one little update. For Clearwater folks and the folks along Buckhorn Road and some others where they're now within that because of the substations or whatever, any idea when those, their insurance companies would catch up with those?
The State Fire Marshal's office has done their part. It's now in the hands of the actual insurance companies.
Did we get an answer back from that letter, John?
No, sir. But I'm sure Shane's been talking with them on the, on the phone and, um, you know, they're telling, they're telling us it's a, you know, four-month process and, um, didn't seem like there was a very, uh, urgent need for a giddy-up to, to help us out there. But Clearwater, Clearwater Force should have been part of the new ratings January first.
What it is, is there some contractor that does the mapping? I guess does it on a quarterly basis is what I understand.
That's three times a year now.
Three times a year?
Try minister.
And so the people that oversee this is the Fire Marshal and the insurance?
Commissioner.
Commissioner? And they're not doing anything about it. So our people sit here and pay thousands of dollars over on insurance because they won't get off the dime and, and get this taken care of.
Well, at the Christmas party that they had in the Northwest Pocket, uh, did Chief Nance tell them that by March? He, he gave a date.
Oh, they're big. Dates was sliding from January to February to March and could be April now.
Are you, uh, moving that?
For his substation?
No, it won't change.
Well, it's the same. They, they submit the same as ours. Yeah.
All right. We'll get ahold of our...
Thank you, madam.
Thanks, guys. Next on the agenda. Okay, presentation of the county health report. Terrell Jones, you're already up there. You're ready to go.
Do you have a color copy of the report? I brought some.
Yes.
This report is a annual update of the community health assessment. It's done every four years. It contains, uh, two types of statistics. One is what the community perceives are the health issues in Lee County. And they've, they've rated five top concerns. And then there's the state's statistics that tell what they've received in data that show what the five top health concerns are in the county. Our health educator, Pam Glover's here. She can answer real detailed questions about it. But in general, I would just say that, um, coming into Lee County as the health director in August, I've, um, I'm aware of all of these issues, but some have stood out. A particular teen pregnancy is an issue that we are trying to get a, a grasp on and see if we can improve that. I like the diagram on the second page. It's this circle that shows the individual and then the family forms the social networks and organizations, community, public policy, in order to improve the health outcomes in this county. All of these areas need to be active and be connected to each other. And it's a fairly complex process, but I feel like that, um, Lee County is situated, with a town right in the middle and a fairly small county area-wise, that there's a fairly tight-knit community and, and the potential for improving health outcomes is higher than maybe in some places where everything's just scattered everywhere. So, um, at any rate, the, uh, the community had identified dental health care, obesity, access to mental health, mental health care. This teen pregnancy is now called Positive Behavior Task Force to address those issues. Now, these are the things that the community perceived as issues. And then, uh, as you flip through, um, well, uh, we did address some emerging, emerging issues, the unemployment rate, uh, and then the natural disaster that took place in the county, which was handled really well by the way. Shane was here for that. And then it talks about the five, top, the top five leading causes of death. And heart disease, cancer, stroke, chronic liver respiratory disease, diabetes are the top five issues. So we're working on all of them. And do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I have a question, couple of observations. I'm very, very interested in, um, diabetes and obesity and the connection between them. And I just wanted to ask you, I noted here under obesity, it says one major objective is to assist the school district in gathering and analyzing data on body mass index of students and also the amount of actual physical fitness activities that are provided through classroom work and physical fitness teachers. Uh, that's on page, uh, well, it's down there under obesity. And I hope that there is something in place so that we can begin to measure that kind of progress. That is, with our students, um, the menus that they are offered, the food availability to them. I think everybody knows that there's sort of a push to try to improve that, to get out of high sugar content foods and high fat content foods and to try to get healthy as best we can. And, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm strongly in support of that type of thrust. Um, it occurs to me, and, and, and the linkage to diabetes because obesity is a direct correspondent with obesity, uh, with diabetes, which is one of the, if not the, top killers in this country. I mean, it is very pervasive and it is very, uh, unforgiving if, if our population does not get on with it, of, of preventing it. The point I wanted to make and I wanted you to make a note and maybe you have a quick answer for this, I don't know. But I would love to, several times a year, to hear from you about the schools' compliance with, uh, this tracking of obesity. And it may be underway and happening, so maybe that's a good news story that it, that you have the baseline data and we will be tracking that, um, into the future and that hopefully it will improve and improve and get better and better. So that was my little message and...
Pam, do you want to speak on that?
No.
Good afternoon. Um, I serve on the School Health Advisory Council and this initiative regarding collecting the data, the EMI's within the elementary schools, actually took, uh, took away with J., uh, with J. Glenn Edwards. And, uh, so that is something that the School Health Advisory Council were working diligently on trying to gather that because we do see a lot of our younger children are becoming obese. And when I was gathering the data and we noticed that diabetes was a concern and I called many medical offices and they were saying the same things, that they're getting more and more, you know, younger diabetes that they're diagnosing.
That's right.
And, um, actually I'm doing a presentation on Thursday with a program called Instant Recession. And they've actually been doing it in Forsyth County for about two years now. And it just take, uh, they just take like a ten-minute break and they get the children up and kind of let them energize to move them around because when once children get kind of bored or stagnated, their attention, they lose their attention. And Forsyth County schools have actually had good reports in their, um, obesity levels going down as well as their school grades improving, behavior improving. So the, uh, the schools and the health department So, the, the schools and the health department and Lee County, we are definitely working on dealing with this childhood obesity issue.
Well, that's very good news, and I hope you'll come back and give us a report on that at some future time, that we, that the schools are 200% involved and cooperating, and I don't have any reason to think they would not be, but this, this could be a win-win for our population here, so, thank you.
Let me ask you, will you give us your name and your title if you would?
Pamela Glover, Adolescent Health Coordinator and Health Educator.
Okay, and do you do community talks?
Yes, sir.
In churches and other locations?
Yes, sir.
I was just going to mention that, Robert.
I'm sorry, forget everything else.
No, I, I, I was able to attend a workshop that Pam put on for some of the religious communities and other organizations in town on the Positive Behavior Task Force. And I was very impressed with what I saw and the extreme effort that they had put in to, to get people involved, and I would like to encourage that to continue for other companies and organizations in town, because this is something that affects people for their lifetime.
How do they reach you? Phone number?
Well, they have, they have my number, and it's at the health department, it's 718-4640, extension 5359.
Of all the people that we have in the health department, Pam is the most, the one who's out in the community more than anyone else, educating, coordinating groups to get together to work on projects. With a population of 65,000, that's a daunting task, and I wish I had, you know, six of her or 10.
She does a good job of public presentations. She was involved in the Lee Schla presentations, public years.
While, while we're on, on the topic here, and while Pam is still up, I'd also like to ask a question about the, take a step back about two years, your predecessor made the comment, Terrell, that we have one epidemic in Lee County, and that is teenage pregnancy. And he, he made, he was very emphatic about how serious a problem it was two years ago. And we saw a dip in our statistical outcomes for the 2009 data, I guess, we, we dropped down where we were 20th in the state, even though the state still ranks very highly in the country, and the country is the second highest in the, in the industrialized world, so it didn't really, it wasn't anything to write home about. But I guess we saw a step back up in statistical information from 15 to 19-year-olds based on the 2010 data, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we're now back in the top seven or eight counties in the, in the state again. I also noted when I went back and looked at the historical data, that we are one of only three, I think, three or four counties in North Carolina that is always in the top 20. Always. We haven't had, we haven't, going back as far as they've been tracking the statistics, we've always been in the top 20 in terms of high teenage pregnancy. And when you look at that, there are some counties that, that will run a course where they're high for a while, and then they'll, then they'll have some improvements based on programmatic effects or, or, or year-to-year perturbations or whatever, but Lee County is always in the top 20, always in the, always in the, in the top quintile in the state for high teenage pregnancy. That tells me we have behavior issues. And so, I, I certainly, you know, endorse you calling it a positive behavior task force, let's put a positive spin on it. But the question is, what are we doing different now that's going to make a difference? And how are we mobilizing the faith-based community to try to participate in this process so that we can, we can actually make a dent in it and change behaviors in this county?
I have been asked some questions like that, you know, why is, why are these numbers the way they are? And informal, informal replies are that there's nothing for these kids to do after school. And a lot of other communities maybe have facilities and places for the go activities, and that might be part of it. Part of it's, of course, education, letting them see the consequences in their actions in advance so they can think twice enough. And I believe that that's a very important aspect, and that maybe is the part where, where you're at going with this.
Well, let me stop you there, because you said one thing that's very important, I think, and that is, let's look at, at the after-school programs. And I know that the Boys and Girls Club is very proud of this statistical record of having, I think, one teenage pregnancy in the last five or seven years. Of all those hundreds and hundreds of children that they've had there, after-school programs, why don't we go to school on what they're doing? Because they obviously know what right looks like, you know? They've obviously got programs or efforts that make a huge difference, because we're talking about, by and large, a minority population, and a lot of the demographic is that we have a problem with, with teenage pregnancy in this community. So, are we doing, are we making an effort to get with Bo Hedrick and figuring out what it is about his programs that we need to emulate and other programs?
Yeah. The Boys and Girls Club was at the workshop.
Oh, I'm sure they were.
They participated, and so were several religious-based organizations and other organizations, and they were able to share information there. I was impressed with the way they're doing that. Now, if that continues, we should see, see some positive drop there.
You know, we're looking at the statistics. And what my question is, does Lee County do a better job reporting than the other counties?
Can I, can I interject? One thing, and what Commissioner Will Matt mentioned was in 2009, I stated in the county health report, we did state that teen pregnancy was an epidemic. And one thing that we did is that we called a lot of stakeholders, we had a roundtable meeting at the Civic Center early morning, and we met with, goodness, a lot, a lot of people. And we, we truly took a survey as to what we, as the adults, thought was the issue, what was going on with our young people. And of course, for their first concern was the lack of education, then it was the lack of parental guidance, the lack of, of, I'm sorry, extracurricular activities, peer pressure, different things like that. So, and then we put together a public forum a few months later, and we actually had a panel, including a young person, because that's one thing that we're trying to do on a lot of our MEED councils and committees, is that we like to meet and talk about young people, but we don't have young people on the committees to give us that firsthand insight. And with that, and with the education piece, we know that the General Assembly in June of 2009, they passed that House Bill 88, which now requires that every school system has to incorporate abstinence-based education as well as comprehensive sex education, which means that, yes, it still focuses on abstinence, but it also lets the young people, give them information about if you're going to participate in sexual behavior, how to be safe. Now, your child can, you can always opt your child out. And one thing that we did, the health department and this task force, is that we worked strategically with the school system, with the Appalachian State Training Center, Dr. Donna Brightenstein, in training the PE teachers to get them prepared and to, and curriculum, and implementing what the law was stating that Lee County school system needed to do. So, education is being taught more in the schools. One concern that we are working on right now with this task force and Commissioner Parks we mentioned that, is that we need to implement male initiatives, because a lot of times we tend to leave the males out of this teen pregnancy prevention. And we're trying to get, actually, I put out a call to a lot of positive males, because when you go into the communities, you, people are able to receive you if they can relate, you know? A young man wants to see a, a male talking to them versus, you know, females to some degree. And one thing with the data, and we were concerned, we were actually alarmed too, when we saw that partial 2010 teen pregnancy data, it is partial, it's not complete, it was just only for the 15, the 19-year-olds. And I actually made a call to the State Center for Health Statistics and talked to the supervisor of that department, and he said that where our rate did increase, we, our ranking increased, we went back up to seventh for 2010 compared to twentieth for 2009. But what happened is that we had less pregnancies in that age group, we had 145 in that 15 and 19 group. In 2009, we only had 143 for 2010. But what also happened with us is that we had about 2,100 young people in that 15 and 19 age group in 2009, and now in 2010, we had about a little over 1,800. So, our population and the age group declined, went down some, as well as some of our neighboring counties, their data drastically dropped, which means it pushed Lee County up. So, we didn't have more pregnancies, it was just other variables that made us rise to the top.
Well, are, are you suggesting then we're out of epidemic status with teenage pregnancy?
No, sir.
Okay, so, so the, the point is, is that we've still, it still remains a top priority for the health department.
Yes.
It still remains, persists as a, as a, as a chronic problem here. And obviously, Lee County, if I can make a point of emphasis, has got a problem well beyond what Harnett, Chatham, Moore, and others around here have. So, we need to be, take a real deep look, look even deeper than we have in the past, and maybe start looking at some other things that we haven't done in the past to try to approach the problem. I would suggest one thing, and I know you have the authority to do it, perhaps it's, it can't be made public because of the sensitivity here, but you can look at the actual names of the women who are getting pregnant. You can actually evaluate the case study, what, what their motivations were. Ask them the question, why, you know, what didn't you do, or what did you do, or why were you active, or what's your value system? Ask them point blank, you know, why did you let this happen, or how did you get into this situation? Because I got to tell you, I've talked to a few of them over the last, last several years. I had clients over at Bredda Life Ministry that came in, second and third generation teen pregnancy. It's, it's chronic, it's in their family, they don't see anything wrong with it. They come in and they, they tell you, well, you know, I know I can, I can get, I can get Section 8 housing, my, my grandmother is going to take care of my babies because, or my mother's going to take care of my babies because we're all loved together in the house, and we get Section 8 housing as a result of this. And we got to teach, teach children, these teenage women and men, that's wrong. That's, that's no excuse, because you can get government assistance, that's no excuse to perpetuate this behavior. We've got, we've got to attack that problem. And I, and I know you've met recently with, with Barbara Taylor.
Yes.
And, and, and I would just encourage you to use her as, to the maximum extent possible with her Wise Women Program, and, and expand that as broadly as you can across the county, because we've got to reach all of these, all of these girls and, and, and the boys that they're, that they're, that they're sleeping with. I mean, we've just got to stop this, this somehow, and we got to try new approaches, and maybe the faith-based community is the best way to go.
Exactly. We, we are, we've got a free training, and, and this was really something unexpected. Donna Brightenstein, Appalachian, you know, the Training Center, they actually charge quite a bit of money, but they have agreed, because they know the issue that Lee County is in as well. They had, we told them what we were trying to do with our faith-based, faith-based community, and they have agreed to let our churches come for free, and actually provide them with the curriculum for, for whatever curriculum they want to choose, they're going to give them the learning material. And that training is, of course, is on their time, which we're hoping is going to be either in February or March. But that is one thing, because we do know, we can't, we can't reach them all, but they are in church and different places like that, so we definitely...
Are you in coordination also with the Lee County families and community center Carolyn Spivey?
Yes, yes. Her, her young lady serves on my Positive Behavior Task Force.
Coalition for families.
Yeah, yeah, because they've, they've been doing a lot through the years, and I hope, you know, that they're a factor in this.
We invited them to our next board health meeting to present their, their activities as we can help.
Let me also encourage you to make it, make a special effort to go back to United Way this year, and ask United Way to help sponsor, you know, maybe some added emphasis across the breadth of their agencies, to try to help, help in their areas, because each one of them can contribute in some way. I know last year, we, we took a different approach with our, our compassion forum last year, and this year, I would hope that maybe we would, we would reintroduce this as a, as an important topic that we need to, we need to address.
And Commissioner Hayes, to answer your question again, is that I actually work very closely with Carolyn's group. I actually, sir, I do an in-kind service for them with their teen outreach program. I facilitate one of their after-school programs, at least senior high schools. So, we actually work together, and we train the school system, and we, we work very closely together.
Let me ask you a, a particular stat that I'm interested in with teenage pregnancies. Do you all look at the economic background of the family or the individual?
Generally, it's...
If there's nobody working in that household, sometimes the results are obvious.
Yep.
So, maybe we ought to send some of them to the EDC and the county commissioners and the city council to ask for more jobs here in this, in this county. That might help some, get them out of the park.
Give them into training, because that's the big gap right now.
At least get them to, get their parents or somebody to work.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Now, the other question I have is along the same lines, except this is on obesity. And when I was in school, I was chairman of the Obesity Club. I want to ask you this, when you do find that problem, how do you go about helping that individual who may come from unemployed or underemployed family?
That, Commissioner Reeves, that has been one of our most difficult tasks, because even serving on the council and speaking with the nurse supervisor there, she says, she can tell a family that your child is obese, but we don't have any, really have any resources in Lee County.
Right.
To take, to, to say, they can help you.
And only, only make that point because sometime you do more damage by singling them out and making them more aware of it. And I, I enjoy listening to some of these great things that are being said, but the reality is this, if you don't have a way to help, you may be doing more harm without first trying to get some resources in place. And I don't know what those resources ought to be or what they are, but maybe communicating with this board would help some.
I, I think that what a person realizes is that their health is not good, or that they're heading towards poor health, they want, they don't want that to happen. And if they have good information...
I never want to be hungry, but I've been hungry before.
One of our responsibilities at the health department is to try to provide education that people need to make their lives better. And we have been exploring it with the Board of Health, some possibilities of how to reach teenagers better. Now, Lee County has a Stanford social webpage where you can go and find out events that are going on for, like when Santa Claus comes to the park and, and things like that. And someone suggested, why not have a Stanford teen social webpage? So, we're looking into that, and we want to be able to, because teens, younger generation, are all about, they spend their life on the computer screen looking at them, and a lot of their activities are shared online, jokes and favorite songs and places to go. So, we're going to try to, I'm not good at that, the social network and all that on the internet, but my wife's pretty good at it, I'm going to ask her for some coaching. And we're going to figure this, a way, an extra way or a new way to, to reach where we think there is a way.
You know, the statistic regarding the, the individual's economic base is of grave importance to me, because the poorer you are, the more likely you to wind up in that man's custody back there. That's the sheriff's department and the police department. And, and a large part of the problems are not always directly reflection of what that individual is about, it's about the conditions that they live in and suffer behind. So, keep us posted with that kind of information. If you give it, you know, I enjoy reading the good things that you're doing, but I also want to read the real things that go on in a person's life.
You know, if, if among all the, the feedback you're, you're gathering, if you hear a recurring theme about, we don't have anything to do in Lee County, and I've, and I've heard that myself, I would be interested in, in, in any suggestions that they're giving about what, what a teen center would look like and how it would operate, where it should be, and that kind of thing. I know, I know several churches have mentioned that is possibly an outreach mission of sponsoring and hosting a teen center somewhere in the, in the middle part of the county, perhaps downtown, because that's one of the, one of the few services we don't have in Lee County. I mean, we have a wonderful senior center, we have, we have some incredible cult transportation. We, we do a lot of great things in Lee County that the surrounding counties don't have, but one thing we don't offer is, is a teen center. Maybe that's something we can do, we can look at where we could, we put the Boys and Girls Club on steroids, you know, and have something that, that would, that would be there, that would attract teens in there and provide them perhaps a faith-based environment that would, that would, that would help educate and, 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 and put a dent in the program or in the problem with the teen pregnancy.
See, rather than, rather than come out with another new program, you know, if, if I had a more considerate board at times, we could use the Boys and Girls Club.
Or, or, or that as an option, yeah. Just expand the Boys and Girls Club to that point.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm wide open to that. I, I would think that those kinds of suggestions coming back in are what we want to hear.
What I was about to say is, if, as Pam says, that the counties around us, their teen pregnancy rates have dropped, making ours appear to be higher, then it's, I think it's my job to get around here and find out what they've done to make their rates drop and, and see if it is because they've got access.
Yeah, find out if they're still counting first.
I think that are.
Regardless of what the other counties' numbers are doing, we got, we got to concern ourselves with Lee County, and statistically, and otherwise, we have an epidemic still, and we need to address it.
Well, what I'm saying is, let's find out what's working in other places and see.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve, the report is presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose N.A.
Thank you all both.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda, John, you're in for Linda.
And Lisa.
Lisa and John are filling in for Brenda?
Yes, takes two of us.
Good steward, right?
Yes. Ms. Potts is very much under the weather today, and I told her, she originally asked me to pull the item, I told her I thought between Lisa and myself, we could handle this item. It's actually pretty straightforward, and I'll let Lisa talk about it.
Back in the budget process, if you remember, there was a lot of questions about state funding levels. So, the JCPC board held back on some of the monies that they were anticipating getting from the state. So, when the final numbers came through, there was an additional $32,000 that had not been used in their budget. So, they are at, the JCPC board is asking to use part of that money, or 27,000, for additional funding for some temporary salaries, using a temp agency to bring in a part-time coordinator position, which was one of the positions that was cut this year because of the loss of funding for Hillcrest, and an additional part-time residential childcare worker to do some fill-in work over there. They are also asking to use 3,000 for additional funds for the restitution program, an additional 2,000 of the money to bring it up to the 32,000 total for the JCPC board to attend additional conferences and meetings. So, that's what they have, they're asking. So, it would be putting 32,000 in those various line items. Brenda did notify me that she has checked, and there is a temporary agency locally who has somebody who is qualified to do that work. So, we do know that there is a resource out there. Now, I understand that she has recommended we use a temporary agency so the county does not become liable for unemployment costs and other things related to that position.
Sure, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Motion has been made to approve the request of the JCPC. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose N.A.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, John.
I know when to delegate.
There you go.
Okay. Next discussion refers to visitor promotion marketing organization, you pass that one off too?
No, I'm, I'm handling this one. I told Bob I would handle this one tonight, because this was mainly discussion, we were not coming to the board to do any action. And I have to say that I'm probably, partially responsible for this proposal even coming forward, because as I took part in the visioning process, this was the one area I harped on was that we lacked a common marketing and promoting effort. we lacked a common marketing and promoting effort for the city of Sanford and Lee County. We have a ton of groups, you know, you can lay them out there from the Civic Center to the EDC, to the Chamber, to the Second Century Downtown Business Development, and we just don't really have a very good coordinated effort to market and promote. And my idea was, in the visioning process, is that we should get all these groups together and pool the resources and try to do a better job at it. So, Mr. Joyce and his board have decided that they want to take the lead in this. I told him that I thought it'd be a good thing to just go ahead and put a draft proposal before us so that we could start thinking about this concept, and not really an effort to approve this tonight, but a chance to ask some questions. And then in the future, they would like, their board would like to have a meeting with our board to discuss these issues that they brought up. Obviously, there are some issues with funding, you know, to put something like this together, but the county can contract with them and help them get this started. So, I put it before you and be happy to answer any questions.
Have a comment?
Yes.
I think that this is one of the most important things that we could do this year, and I hope that everybody will look at it completely and thoroughly. We truly do lack what our competition has all around us, and particularly up and west of here, cities like Hickory, Salisbury, and certainly the larger cities, even Southern Pines, and on and on it goes. And I've been, as long as I've been around, I've heard this discussed, and it has never gotten the kind of traction it deserves. And as a part of the development of this county, the economic development stimulation of this county, if we had a visitor's center and really had it well organized, following some of the studies that have been done at some expense, I think we would take a giant step forward. The payoff would not come immediately, but we would begin to see, I think, increased flow of commerce and traffic and visitors into Lee County and into Sanford. And I think it would be, it would be something that over the next five to 10 years, we could truly be proud of. And having said that, I wanted to, and this is just not today for debate whether we approve it or not, because it's a multi-part program with the city and the county and private business.
And the town of Broadway.
And the town of Broadway, absolutely. But I did mark a couple of things, and I just wanted to suggest this for consideration, that I'm not sure that we want to call this a tourism bureau. I think that the Second Century Group has suggested otherwise. I think that whatever the name is, I'm not sure that we want to feature it as something that promotes tourism, but more marketing, more visitors that come in, a sort of friendly face on it. And in the funding of it, on page 97, I wondered about this and would be wishing to lean this way, as far as my one vote goes. I think that the private sector should do more than is indicated here. It shows them LC-2C stakeholders, as I understand it, that would represent the private sector.
That's Second Century, isn't it?
Yeah. And I think that right off, it looks to me that they should be in there equally with the governments, $35,000. That cost of getting this thing off the ground might change a little bit, but I think the point made is that I'd love to see the private sector here weigh in heavily to help get a visitor's center, because they would benefit from it heavily. And the other thing is, I would hope that there would be a short-term life for the Chamber of Commerce to be the sort of ramrod or manager of this. I think it's a wonderful gesture and it would be a logical way to get this thing off the ground, but I would hope with all input that everyone would believe that maybe give them three years max to really get this thing together and on its feet, because they themselves have suggested they don't want to run it full-time and that it would be turned over to a body whatsoever.
Some type of authority.
Yeah, an authority, like most of these other communities have, that has its own board and has, of course, linkage and reporting responsibilities to the various major stakeholders. But I would just urge you all to really, this is the moment, this is the year perhaps, as the economy starts to improve, if we could really get our backs behind this and get the city to do so, and Broadway and all of the others, and especially the private sector, we might have something, a real legacy here to create and to leave that starts really, we are the heart of North Carolina, literally and figuratively, and we are very proud, Commissioners of this county. And I think this is a way to really lead the future and speak up and speak out and be visible statewide and to increase our welfare in the future.
I think that was an excellent synopsis of suggestions I would make as well. I agree with you totally. I would, not going even further, I think that the private sector ideally would be paying for all of this. It would be ideal, certainly an expectation on our part, that they would pony up, you know, half to two-thirds of this funding to do it. I totally agree that we need a visitors bureau of some sort, and that I think it would greatly benefit the county. There are a lot of attractions and things that we could draw people to beyond what we're doing now. I know Don Hudson would love to have the help, you know, bringing people in for the pottery festival and Dave Nestor on the wine fest and all of that. You know, I see in this...
In the Temple Theater.
In the Temple Theater. I see in this budget here, though, some inadequacies, and I hope, I guess what we're trying to do today is to prove this being added to the workshop, right?
Yeah.
So, we'll have a greater discussion of it.
That's correct.
And I hope that we will spend some time going through this, because I think it would be well worth the exercise. I would like to see a little more emphasis placed on, you know, perhaps putting a first-class website up and having, because, you know, that's the most bang you're going to get for your buck, and I don't see that in the budget right now, putting together, you know, a truly attractive and competitive website that would be useful for people to pull their own information about Lee County.
Actually, one of the first things I thought about when I started looking into this is, why couldn't we utilize some of the college classes to do some of this stuff?
Certainly could be a part of it, yeah.
Would help them with the learning ability, plus give them the opportunity to help develop the community.
Yeah, the college definitely wants to be involved in it from the community, from the civic center standpoint, and actually since, you know, Mr. Reeves and I serve on the, this is one of those things that I had on my report, was Mr. Reeves and I serve on the 2020 Committee in promoting of the civic center and getting more events. And not only that, when they do get the events, having something just to hand people to say, here's a brochure on all the restaurants and places to stay here in town. We don't even have that to hand out.
Yeah, by the way, I brought some samples back from Fayetteville last week, some really impressive marketing material that we should clone or copy.
It's interesting, and I like the idea. Unfortunately, like some of you, I don't want to move too fast. You're going to have, whenever this report is finished, an interesting report on the condition of the civic center and some of the needs there, and they're not cheap. I'm going to tell you that upfront. I think it's a great idea. I think it's the ideal place for it to be housed, but I think there really needs to be a sincere and genuine partnership on this deal, because right now, moving to do this right away puts an additional burden on this body to try and make things accommodating. And folks, I will tell you, you have some issues on a 20-year-old building that have not been addressed in quite a while. So, I'm not against it. I do offer a word of caution and make sure that we understand what we're getting into when we elect to become partners in this ordeal. I am glad it was cleared up that it's not tourism. I didn't want to get into that. I like what they're saying here. The private sector, I agree, needs to do a bit more in this regard, because we are providing, could be providing the home for. So, I'm all for it, but let's make sure that we look at what our demands are going to be for the upcoming year.
I have a question, John. I think this is good, and it seems to me like, is there the possibility that they were thinking that this could be self-sustaining after an initial startup? Because I really like the idea that government would help get it going and then step out and let this be a self-generating, self-fulfilling kind of thing. Wasn't that within the scope of this thing?
That was part of it, and also the part of it was trying to get the additional occupancy tax installed for that. But that's, you know, under the current legislature. I doubt any new occupancy tax is going to be forthcoming. So, the sustainability would have to come from, you know, the locals. And I really think from the chamber's perspective, and the reason I'm excited about it for us is if we help them with the seed money and the chamber can show that, you know, that this program will provide the value, I think businesses will participate. So, that's, you know, that's really, you hate to say, yeah, it's going to be sustainable, but that is their idea, that that's what they want to do. And obviously, we don't want to be in it forever. And the reason I went ahead and brought it is, you know, the budget season starts in 60 days, and that's not a long time away. And so, if we're going to start discussing this with our partners and the chamber wants to discuss it with us, it's pretty much time that we need to get involved in those discussions and get moving. A lot of times, you know, we throw things out here and we're expecting votes quickly, and I wanted you all to be able to think about this and start talking with others about it and get all the information on it, because I think there's a lot to it. But when you have communities around us that are out there actively promoting their communities, whether it be just through a brochure that they send out to industry or whatever, they're getting hits off of it and we don't even have a piece to send out. It's kind of workshop that, you know, maybe we need to, everybody's got the resources, but if, I mean, if we pulled them together, I think we could really put together a good effort. And I like the website idea.
So, you need to put this on the workshop agenda?
Yes, sir. And the interesting thing about the webpage is that's been a discussion since I've been on, I've been here. Everybody's talked about trying to coordinate that, and it's time to do it.
I got to tell you, not only in that area, but also in the economic development area, we really need an uplift on our web presence. We are really lacking.
And, you know, if we're honest with ourselves, Sanford and Lee County are not tourist destinations.
We're not.
So, but people need to know what we have to offer here. And I would like to see us look at a regional partnership, because you've got, you know, Moore County with their golfing and their Southern Pines area. You've got us with the pottery and a lot of the other things that are unique to Lee County. You've got Chatham County with their wineries and some of their things. So, I would think that there would be some benefit for us pooling resources and giving us some unique name, but at least, you know, have a website where people know what we have to offer.
The one thing...
I'm not that that's not discounted, that we're just looking for a standalone Lee County solution.
The one thing that we have that differentiates us from the other counties around us, believe it or not, is a civic center. We have a civic center that can host conferences, and we have enough capacity here. This is something that's greatly underutilized. And in order to justify further expenses there, we need to start using the DAC ON thing. We need to get it marketed. And that's, and I think, you know, we could certainly evaluate doing more to promote the civic center. But none of the counties around us have a civic center like what we've got. They don't have a large-scale capacity for conferences, and we haven't.
Just be aware that you may have to spend some money, you make some money, and your investment should be done, as you know, wisely.
I would also like to know how much of the hotel occupancy tax you're missing out on, because more people are booking online now. I have a suspicion that we're missing out on a whole lot of that revenue, so.
They're supposed to be taking care of that loophole, so I don't know how. I read about it in the state of North Carolina. Yes, there's supposed to be something getting, if not already, will be, but we'll look into it further.
Look at it, check on it night.
No, okay. All right, moving on.
We're going backwards to the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I just, you know, I'll just briefly address this and then we can just table it if necessary. I took the liberty to review the Hazard Mitigation Plan and I found it, and this is not to be in any way offensive, Shane, I found it to be inadequate, because I saw that it addressed upfront, man-made and natural disasters, and then after that token language upfront, it was all about natural disasters. I also noticed in there that there were objectives and goals on hazard mitigation, and I didn't agree with the way they were worded. I just frankly think that they deserve to be perhaps a little better thought through and addressed in a more broadly-based fashion. I was going to suggest that rather than, unless there is a compelling time sensitivity to get this thing approved today, that we take one more meeting and then make a copy available electronically or otherwise to each of the Commissioners, have them take a look at it and see if there's agreement, rather than just putting it on the consent agenda and tacitly approving the thing. I think we could do a better job addressing some things. You know, for example, it doesn't address any of the tornado activity or any of the things that we learned as lessons from the tornado this last year.
It addresses that tornadoes are considered a level seven hazard in Lee County, which is the demographics for North Carolina, this area.
Right.
You know, granted, April 16th was the exception.
Right.
But, you know, what we're saying, Lee County's not a tornado activity county. This plan is a backwards plan. This plan's adoption start with FEMA goes reaching for Robert Nash, which is our point of contact, and is adopted first by FEMA. They pushed the process up during the tornado activity so that we were eligible for funding. If this plan was not in place and adopted by FEMA, the state of North Carolina's emergency management, back in April, we were not eligible for any funding. So, once it's adopted by FEMA, which it was in April, it then went to North Carolina's Hazard Mitigation Section, which is Ryan Weedman. They went through the process and adopted this plan, so it is actually a backwards plan, and I know that's exactly what you did.
So, what are you telling me? You're telling me that whether we approve it or not, it's in place?
No, I'm telling you, if we make any changes to it, we'll have to go back through the entire process again, starting with adoption of the plan with FEMA.
Well, I would just, and certainly that's noteworthy, that people understand that if we make any changes to it, we're going to buy ourselves back into another process in time, but that is certainly no excuse not to take a look at it. Certainly no excuse not to make adjustments to the plan if we really believe that we need to take action to do hazard mitigation in Lee County. I would just tell you that it's all about natural disasters. There's no man-made discussion in there at all. Bioterror is not even a factor in here. The second thing is, is that it doesn't really address, in my mind, I mean, I'm a contingency planner by trade, so I look at those things. I've done these, many of these over time, and I can just tell you, I don't see any contingency planning in here. I don't see any real mitigation of hazards, other than where there's a lot of emphasis on flood and flood control. There's a ton of that in there, and there's a lot of discussion about where the low-lying areas are, and I mean, Don Kavasich, and obviously, his thumbprint is on this thing, and they've done a really good job about flood abatement and water hazards. But what we really haven't done, I think, is perhaps address a lot of the other things in hazard mitigation, things that we can do about, you know, potentially to be ready and command and control, some things in that area.
Well, I'd just like to address our emergency operation plan.
Right.
And the way this plan comes about, this is actually a joint plan between Community Development, Emergency Management, and then other agencies throughout the counties, such as the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, CMS, they've all had input on it. We had to complete a crosswalk with State Emergency Management to get from the prior plan to the plan that we have in place now, or if we're asking for adoption of. So, you know, it's not a plan that's half-hazardly put together. There's a plan that meets requirements of state, North Carolina, and FEMA that doesn't say we can't go above and beyond that. say we can't go above and beyond that. You look at, we've had this discussion before, we can sit here and prepare and prepare and prepare for everything, but you still have to prepare for the unknown, and that's the hardest thing in this job. And that is part of, you know, that's what my career is, is planning for emergencies. This plan, it addresses the natural hazards, because that's, you know, that's the large impact we've had, natural hazards. There are a lot of vulnerabilities for man-made hazards, some of which can even discuss in here, and I'm sure you're aware of that. We do have transportation corridor here that opens us up really largely to hazardous materials incidents. We have some target sites here for domestic terrorism. But, you know, we met the requirements for FEMA, we completed the crosswalk, and this is a plan we have for now. We'll be glad to pull it, we can make changes on it, and I'll get through the recent bill process.
I wanted to ask you that very question. You've already done, I think, what you need to do to satisfy the other departments of the federal government.
Yes, sir.
If we take another look at it and identify some changes that we maybe should have incorporated the first time around, what is the process for introducing them and possibly changing later?
We can go back to this backwards plan, because I don't agree with it, Commissioner Womack. I mean, I don't agree the way this is set up. Once it's adopted, we do an annual review on it once a year with Ryan Weedman, which is our mitigation planner. We can make changes in the plan, has to be noted in the back of the plan, and then we'll take those changes into consideration when we get to the revision process at the end of the five-year cycle. So, we can make changes to the plan, once it's adopted, they just have to be duly noted.
First, let us take care of what we need to take care of and get in the game, and then you can look at the changes, I think.
But we have a plan in place, do we not?
This, according to FEMA, yes, but they're waiting for this final resolution.
Right, and what's our cutoff date to have this submitted?
They're waiting on it. They have not given us a cutoff date, they're waiting on it.
See, now here's my point.
Six p.m.
I can't tell you the number of times that I said, "Why do we do that? Why do we do it this way?" And everybody always says back, the staff always says back, "Well, it's in the plan." That's what we just did, we did what's in the plan. And I say, "Well, show me the plan." They show me the plan, I find it inadequate. Then I say, "Well, we need to change that plan." Okay. So, here we have a chance to influence the plan and to say, "You know, there's some other things ought to be addressed here, things we ought to do that make a lot of sense, that would protect the public even better than what we've got in the current plan." And then they say, "Well, but we got to get this done, because FEMA wants it." All I'm saying is, let's do it right. Let's just do it right. Not just what's adequate for the federal government, let's do it right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we, if we approve the, if we approve the plan as you have it here, and we add things own to it, we're on record to say there may be some things that we would like to add that would help. Are we caught up, is there a money problem here? That is, anything that we would add to it would cause confusion by the federal agency that there would be implications that we're going to be coming back for more money? In other words, if we can just be clean and prove this, and then with your help, do the things that Commissioner Womack would like to see added, as add owns, it seems to me like in a simple world, that would be the best of all worlds, if we're not going to trip ourselves up in the process, because it seems like it'd be a mistake, if I understand you correctly, to delay the baseline approval that you need to keep going, but with the commitment that you'll come back to us and work with us. But again, is there a money factor in here that if we're not careful, we'll be owing more than we would otherwise? Or we will be, we'll screw up the network with the feds?
I wouldn't say there's a money factor. One thing that the board may be aware of, this plan, when it was adopted in 2006, was actually headed up by Community Development Group. If you look in there, emergency management has a small portion of it that deals with natural man-made hazards. If you look at the mitigation plan, the majority of it goes back to what the building code affects, you know, strapping hurricanes, not building in the floodplain, reporting, doing the community reporting, which is actually going to save money in Lee County once community development's finished it. We got a phone call in October of 2010 from the state and said, "Where's your plan at? It's due." And we're like, "What plan?" And this was all part of that learning process. There was a meeting held that no one in our office knew about, and the prior emergency management ever stepped up and said, "Don't worry about it, I'll take care of the plan." He actually took responsibility of the hazard mitigation plan from Community Development. If you'll see in there, Community Development actually take the lead on it when this plan goes back through the process in 2016. So, we're trying to get it going in the right direction. That's not making excuses, I'm not saying that you should pat us on the back for not knowing, because that's not an excuse, but that's where this has come from. What you see here, however inequity it may seem, that's about a year's worth of work to put that plan together and to go through all the loopholes and the processes. It's a very slow process, which I'm sure you're aware of when you're dealing with FEMA.
Madam Chair, I'm going to move that we approve as presented, and in addition to that, to allow Commissioner Womack and any other commissioner who wants to engage in any proposed changes, not direct the fire marshal to make changes, but to accept their recommendations as a proposal.
Motion has been made, is there any further discussion?
I would just like to know, how many other commissioners have reviewed the hazard mitigation plan?
How long is it?
Oh, it's more than 51, it's probably about 100 pages. It's 51 pages of mitigation, it's about 93, 95 pages. How many, I just would like to know, how many other commissioners have reviewed? We're about to vote on, we're about to vote on a plan that no one has looked at.
Well, the person we hired looked at it, and the managers looked at it, and you looked at it.
But the person, the person we hired, and I'm not suggesting the plan is all bad, there's a lot of good stuff in there. I'm just saying it's incomplete and inadequate in my mind, and I'm suggesting to the board that before you vote on something you haven't looked at, you probably ought, if it needed our vote and our approval, which it does, we ought to take the time to our constituents to review the plan, rather than just tacitly approving it as if it were okay.
I'd like to call a question, please.
Although it's in favor of Commissioner Reed's motion to approve the plan as presented that sits in Daniel's office that only one has read. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
She was, I voted to approve, so it meant aye or two. Do you vote nay?
So, Doc voted against it.
Oh, you, what'd you vote?
Nay.
So, it's four to three.
Four to three.
Four, or yes.
Four, four.
To approve.
To approve. We have four that said yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Let me ask this question. How many will go read it and come back and report on it? Okay, do that, because it doesn't mean you're going to understand any more than you do today, it just means that you may have read it.
And after they read it, they can come back and actually add it to the agenda to make those changes, right?
They can send.
You are the emergency, this man and his staff.
We can make them make requests, right?
There's not a loss here. We're not losing a thing.
I would read it, because it'd be so hard over my head, I wouldn't have.
Well, it's not really.
Half of us just sends this information.
It's common sense type stuff, but if we've got some gaps in there, and I haven't read it, I should have, we've got some gaps in there, I'd like to close the gaps. Especially when you deal with hazardous material or you're dealing with terrorist stuff.
You've got extensive bad governmental experiences, so does Jim, so I trust you both, Jim.
If it's not bad and I survive, I'm firing you. Okay. Take that.
Fifty-one pages and I haven't seen it, but I'd just like to glance at it. I can't do it in 15 minutes and satisfy myself.
All right.
We'll get everybody a copy.
Don't get it, okay? Not waste the paper, I mean.
Okay. My financial report for November, Lisa.
Do you feel froggy?
I'm just glad to connect. Okay, you have before you the November financial report, and we'll have December at the next meeting and be back on schedule. If you review this, I'll be delighted to answer any questions, I'll hit a couple of high spots. Avalon taxes were at 47.11%, which shows us being quite a bit ahead of same timeframe last year, but remember, we had a major taxpayer not paying until late last year. So, overall, our revenues are at 38.96% when we were at 34.79% last year. Again, I think a lot of that's attributed to the tax income. It'll be, when I give you the January financial report, we'll have a better sense of where we are compared to the same timeframe when everybody hasn't paid, okay? Hate to say that.
Isn't the company taxes in the Cape Fear Fire District get paid? I know that the largest taxpayer, if I remember right, and that Cape Fear District really hurt their fire department budget, because...
I will have to go pull that one, I have not looked back at that, but I can do that before the next meeting and let you know the next report if they are in better shape. As far as its finisher goes, 41.67% was our target. We do have a couple of departments that are still over that amount, most of them, again, due to the size of the departments and certain things being paid upfront or attributing to that. That's what's happening in finance, as well as the governing body, you're paying bright fees, dues, Evergreen audit, things like that are pushing your expenses up front instead of it being spread out over the whole year. EDC, again, is at 47.51, that is still due to the Golden Leaf payment that was due to Frontier, our relationship to Frontier for those containers. Sales tax collections are also attached through the first quarter of the year. You can see that we are a little bit ahead of budget, we're expected to be at least a quarter of the way there, and we, in most categories, are right at that or a little bit above. And on the page 103 of your agenda, you'll see that we're growing at about two, almost 3% growth, which is in the area of what we projected our growth to be at. So, so far, so good on sales tax. We still have the busy season to get in, so it'll be three months from now before I can really tell you how we did in the December timeframe.
On page 3 of your report for the month ended November 30th, under revenues, I see that we are well below half of the revenues and other financing sources over that we were this time last year. Can you basically give me a Reader's Digest version of why that is?
15 versus 38.
Yeah, there's a substantial difference there.
That is, that is probably due to the amount of sum balance we had in the budget last year versus this year. If you look there, we had a $4 million deficit, where this year we only have a 3.8. That's contributing to part of that.
Would be that stark, though. I just can't see it in the line items where we would see such a substantial difference in the revenues over.
Right.
Is this because of intergovernmental transfers in that are early or something?
Part of it is going to also be your transfers to other funds, if you see that number right above there, that's dropped from 1.2 to 601,000.
And those transfers would be what? Would be transfers to like the EDC and...
No, that transfer last year was the money for the Caterpillar project.
Oh, okay.
That we were, we budgeted the transfer over to...
So, really, last year would have been an aberration, and this year we may be more normal?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. I'll try to take a better look at that between now and the December report, just to make sure that's where that's coming from, but, this two numbers have been flip-flopped a little bit. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Are you going to mention anything about sales taxes, or?
I did.
I was, I was hung up back here on the revenues and expenses.
I'm sorry, I'll go over it again. Through the first quarter, we are pretty much on target with our budget, are a little bit ahead. As I pointed out on page 103, our growth on sales tax is around just under 3%, which is in the line area where we budgeted for this year. So, so far, so good. Of course, we haven't hit our peak season, we don't have those numbers in yet, so three months from now, we'll have a better sense of where we are as we hurry well into our budget process. Hopefully, we'll be able to continue. I know when I was out and about, there were a lot of people shopping, how much they were spending is questionable, but there were a lot, there was a lot of shopping going on, so hopefully, our numbers for December or the second quarter will look as good as they did for the first. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. My report's going to be quick. The first item is recognition of the tax administrator and the tax office. We were notified by the North Carolina Association of Assessing Officers that Lee County Tax Administrator Dwayne Brinson and the Lee County Tax Office was awarded the 2011 Joseph E. Hunt Distinguished Jurisdiction Award, Small Jurisdiction, at the North Carolina Association of Assessing Officers Annual Fall Conference. This award signifies that the department is working hard to promote professionalism, education, and dedication to the administration of local property taxation. And so, we have Mary Al, Lisa Faulkner, and Dwayne here, and just wanted to recognize them for their good work and their award.
The only repeat trophy holders, right?
We had it last year too, so we are the two-time reigning champion, I guess.
Two-time defending champion.
That's right.
And I'm very proud, and I will have to say that, you know, I get really, really quick responses on any data inquiries I have, so I appreciate that. And I hear some good things about people who call in, you know, sometimes their frame of mind is not always the best, so I think it takes some special people in your office to handle some of the customer...
Absolutely. That's one reason I asked the revision managers to come join me tonight, and we have two of the three here, but we all kind of have the same mindset, in that if we get a request, or if we get a taxpayer that really needs assistance, we want to educate them. So, it's really a good reflection on the tax office as being so proactive and, you know, it's a tax office award, but I really think it's a reflection on this board and the county administration and the support we get, that the whole county's doing a good job. I mean, it's not just us, and, you know, we really appreciate the support that we get from the board. It means a lot.
I'd like to just mention, I really congratulate you both for the award and for your embracing technology to try to do things smarter, faster, better. Not everybody in the population can take advantage of that, but I know your answer to a lot of problems is there's an app for that, and I appreciate that, and the more we do electronically, the smarter and the better we'll govern.
Is there a trophy or something that you get, or a plaque?
We have a plaque, it's up in our lobby, third floor lobby.
Well, I'd just like to suggest that maybe Billy could lean on Mr. Beeson to, this sounds like a photo op, you know, this week sometime with your crew. I mean, this instills confidence, I think, by our public that our tax office is recognized as tops, and that should be rewarded with recognition.
Yeah, well, people rarely go out in the public and go to, you know, the pool hall or community pool or wherever and talk about the good experience of taxes. It's always the bathroom, it's always the garnishing of wages that you hear about. Nobody really likes paying taxes. Any positive light we can get, we definitely appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
When we get our first sample of how the revow is going, because I, Billy caught me in Iowa, and I was not even thinking county business, so I kind of told him, "Marjorie, did I lie, or..." When are we going to get it?
Well, we have a, and I was going to present that at one of the upcoming board meetings, kind of where we are.
So, it is in the near future.
In the proposed plan. Well, we don't have, we won't establish values until late in the year. And people won't get their value notices until January, maybe March 2013. So, we have to monitor sales and evaluate sales throughout 2012. The current plan, we have to develop the schedule of values that the Board of Commissioners has to review. Right now, it's slated for October, we might move it up if we can, we're going to, you know, see how that plays out.
But you have the ability to capture quarterly, you know, where the numbers are, comparing listings to sales and that sort of thing. You can give us a dipstick check on where things are headed, residential and commercial?
We do that quarterly for the Department of Revenue.
And that's, I think, what people are going to be interested in, is how much deviation are we from the...
Do you know the list?
Ninety-eight, just over 98%.
Is that overall, or is that...
Overall, yeah, that's sampling that we get from the Department of Revenue. They give us a list of deep books and pages that we have to go through and randomly pick out of that list, so.
Yeah, that's not, that's not all county sales.
That's not all sales, right.
That's a random sample that the department sends us, so not even, it may, you know, it may give or take a percent or two, but, you know, I know it's getting late, so I just wanted to, just want to say thank you to the board for the support we get and the county management administration, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good job, job well done.
Madam Chair, just a couple more items. Commissioner Womack and I, at the last EDC meeting, heard a presentation on fracking, and after the meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about Lee County being the epicenter of the debate, and it was probably time for the county to begin our own discussions and how we would set...
And it was probably time for the county to begin our own discussions and how we would set policy for the board. It seems that a lot of other local jurisdictions are starting to take positions. And I think for this board to take a position, we need to decide how the board wants to get educated, how they want to, who they'd like to have come talk to us, and that kind of thing. Because I don't think it's something we just say, "Okay, we're in favor of it. We're ready to go." It's going to take a lot of study, and I kind of just wanted to open that up to a little bit of open discussion tonight and see where the board wanted to go with it.
Chair, I would... This is a very, very complicated and involved issue. I know there's strong feelings both ways on it. I would just suggest that we make that a topic of discussion at the workshop, because it's a huge economic growth and dividend potentially for the county. And I would suggest that we make that one of the pointed topics of discussion, and then maybe bring in Susan or someone that can kind of give us an overview of what's been, what's transpired already and where we are in the county. It's not something that you want to do in five minutes of introductory discussion tonight.
No, it's not.
Is Susan the point person?
Well...
Or if not, shouldn't we make a point person and have someone cataloging all the different things?
Susan Conlin.
She actually has put together several programs.
She's been our, she's been our point person up to this point.
I'm just asking a different question. Is anyone cataloging all the different stories? For example, Duke did one today.
Yes, the answer is yes. Susan and her staff and plus Soil and Water Conservation Board, I just started writing some quick little groups that would be interested in that, and that was, and those were two of them, plus our Planning and Zoning. I read an article today. Environmental Affairs Board. So, you know, at some point, you know, we got, you know, four or five different entities that, you know, maybe we should get together with and talk about it. Also had discussion with the Association of County Commissioners before Christmas about, on this subject. And, you know, obviously, it's a big legislative issue, and they're looking for input from our board. And I told them we weren't ready, that we needed to have some of our own discussions, but willing to engage them. The other, they counted up thirteen counties that are in the basin. And so they feel like there are thirteen counties that could be affected, plus the surrounding counties of those thirteen.
There's also a committee of the State Board of County Commissioners involved with the environment and this very issue, so I'm sure that'll kind of factor in. We're represented on that board.
Did they indicate where any of the other twelve counties might be at this point?
That's why they, that's why they were, kind of initiated the conversation. And they were wanting to hold a meeting with all of us, and so, well, you might want to talk with each one individually first before you try to get everybody in a room.
It's interesting, because depending upon what people have read, I know some towns like Greenville and, who was the other one? Two other cities, one other city in North Carolina have already come out with resolutions opposing...
Cary and...
Yeah, Cary and Greenville, I think, were the two. You know, putting forth resolutions opposing natural gas extraction, you know, without really, I think, digesting fully what the impacts could be and whether they're going to be even implicated. I'm not sure Greenville's even in the basin, you know. But I guess the point would, you know, I agree with Mr. Crumpton that we certainly need to engage immediately and directly and deliberately towards, you know, a board position about fracking and what we want to do as a board, encouraging legislation, whether we support Senate Bill seven oh nine or not. And, you know, I don't think it's prudent at all for us to wait until after the May outbrief that we get that was caused by House Bill, I think, two forty-two.
Four thirty-three.
Was that what it is, four thirty-three? Okay. That the House Bill on energy that required a brief out. I don't think it's prudent to wait. I know some counties up in Pennsylvania have invited us, actually, to come up and visit. Bradford County, Pennsylvania in particular, has, I got a call from one of their commissioners this last week to invite us up if we want to come up and do a deliberate visit sometime. And I think that would be prudent to go up there and see, because they've transformed over the last eight years as a result of natural gas extraction. They're not even, you wouldn't even recognize the county now. They were very similar to Lee County just eight years ago. And now they've, you know, they're flourishing. They've got the lowest unemployment in the state, and they're all thriving as a result of the revenue, substantial revenue gains that they have from that. And I think it would be prudent for us to contemplate taking a trip up there. Not necessarily a taxpayer's sense. I would like, I would, I'd be willing to drive up there at my own expense just to get a good glimpse of what's going on in that county and the kinds of things we need to be taking into consideration.
Where's Dean at in their study job?
I don't know.
You're talking about...
Well, they're charged with the study, and that's due in May, I believe.
May outbrief, yeah.
Madam Chair, I would ask that we allow the manager to appoint a committee of the people that he, some of the committees, the groups he had already established, and also make some contact with the other twelve counties in terms of maybe getting together at some point in the future to talk about it.
I'm not so sure this is an NCACC issue. Since we have a hundred counties and there's only twelve maybe that this may affect, I'm not so sure it's an issue that...
But it's politically charged. It is very politically charged.
They're going to get in the middle of it.
You bet. And then the fact it's, you know, you can see the battle lines forming already in the state. So the NCACC, for no other reason, may get involved simply because it's politically supercharged.
And it affects local issues, and one of the things that, you know, one of the articles I read is, you know, the, obviously zoning and community development, what your community is going to look like. Still, you know, the local communities are still going to want to have a say in that. And at the legislative level, you know, you're going to have to lobby for that, because they could put something in place that would, you know, in a, let's just say, in the wrong zoning district, you know, anybody could have free rein. And I think, I don't think that's what we're, I don't think that would be a good thing for the county. So, you know, you have to be involved in that process and what's actually going to come down in the legislation. And in that regard, the association can help us.
Do you need a motion to set up that commission?
That was a motion.
They made a motion.
Okay, that was a motion.
But I also want to add that we also got an update from our legislative delegation regarding this matter. See where their positions are.
When does a short session start again? When?
It starts up next month. They're going back in next month. I don't know if it's special. No, no, next month. They got, they got a call session.
They might do it tonight.
Short...
You never know. Whatever speaker tells us.
Didn't start till May.
Yeah, I think that's right.
But they start committee meetings before May.
Okay.
Long session is usually February, early February, March, and short session is usually May.
But they're getting longer and longer.
So, motion has been made by Commissioner Reeves to have county managers set up a commission of people within the county who are involved in some way with this issue, and to also get an update from our legislative, Senator Atwater and Representative Stone, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those saying nay?
I've already discussed the twenty twenty meeting. I discussed with the chairman today. I attended a meeting back in early December on a certified retirement community initiative through the Department of Commerce. And there's a lot of interest locally through Carolina Trace, through our senior center about getting involved in this program. And it has to be initiated through municipality. So we're trying to get the, see if the city's going to, you know, initiate it. If the city does not initiate, we're going to have to approach the town of Broadway to see if they're interested in filing that application. But once again, it's really a marketing effort, and it's a reach, it's more of a collaborative thing where other communities are trying to do that through the Department of Commerce. So just giving you an update on that.
There's a deadline on Friday. What's the Friday deadline, John?
Had to have your committees in place to make the July fifteenth application deadline.
So a committee has to be in place, and you have to report that committee to the state then, I guess?
The municipality would have to report that committee to the state.
What kind of feedback are you getting from the city? Because that's only four days away.
I haven't gotten a lot, so I have tried, you know, communicate our interest.
That we would be supportive of whatever...
Through the senior center and obviously Carol, the meeting I was at, representatives from the chamber, the city, the county, senior center, Debbie Davidson, the community college. Obviously, there was a lot of interest, and Carolina Trace. Carolina Trace had a number there.
Is there any possibility that the Wilrig could be, in the wildest stretch of imagination, part of a certified retirement community?
If the city is part of the, of it, yes.
I mean, that's for another meeting, but I do hope you'll talk to us in the not-too-distant future about the housing authority and where that situation stands. You know, it's probably complex, but we haven't heard much lately, and it was...
I have tried to initiate that as well.
Okay.
And I'm actually working with a couple of other issues with the housing authority. They're trying to buy a piece of property from us that we need to sell them on Linden Avenue. I think we're going to get an offer from them finally. And we also, they have a housing complex that's going on that they would like to put up near, right, actually, it's right next OT Sloan Park, right across from the high school there at Nash Street. And they need some help from us there. So we've got a lot going on with the housing authority and trying to work, collaborating with them.
Does the city council have a meeting this week? I mean, this is something that the council would have to vote on, or...
I think they meet Wednesday this week for their law and finance.
I guess if you could check with the city manager or Cornelia, and I did have to mention to Mayor Andrews that there was a Friday deadline, because he and I have both been to a chamber meeting where we heard this and thought it would be a good deal. So I asked him if he'd be willing to be a backup, you know, as municipality if the city of Sanford didn't make a decision. He said he thought that, well, he hadn't talked to anybody yet, but...
Well, it doesn't cost any money to set up the committee.
Right.
And really, what you're doing with the committee is investigating whether you want to go after this designation or not. So it wouldn't take much to get it started, and I'll work with...
Is everybody on this board feeling this would be a good thing to pursue?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
I will get with the city manager and the community development director, because I think he was designated the city rep for that, because he attended the meeting.
Okay.
And tell them that we're interested, and we will do whatever we got to do to get a committee in place by the end of the week.
I called the president of the Real Estate Association. Ask for some support.
Okay. The last issue I have, it's a sensitive issue, and I need to be careful how I report this, but we are having some issues with the electronic system at the jail. And the sheriff has asked me to, in our bids, that we're getting ready to go out here in the next couple of weeks, has asked me to pull out that piece of the bid and go ahead and bid it on its own so we can get the work going on it more quickly. The system we have is dying a slow death, and he is concerned about what ramifications it might have. So I'm seeking permission to pull that out from the board, to go ahead and bid it using informal bidding practices so that I can get this back to you by the next meeting.
What amount of money you talking about?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
I would request that it be a non-binding bid process so we can see what the values are, where we're not obligated to award.
Well, we would not be obligate, we would, we always put that standard clause in there that says we will always award in the best interest of Lee County and bring this back to this board.
I have significant reservations about streamlined and informal bidding, especially in that value.
All the other electronic, electrical stuff in the jail, that's already been done. This is something different, is that correct?
This is the meat of the system that runs, this is the control room.
But all the lighting and all that stuff has already been finished?
Yes, the lighting has. But this is, this is what controls, you know, the opening and closing of the doors. It controls the fire system. They've been getting false alarms from the fire system, which obviously requires a lot of effort out of their part to, you know, they have to remove everybody and make sure it's a false alarm, and then they have to put everybody back in, and...
So we've already approved going forward with a bid, didn't we not?
Yeah, we agreed as part of the total basement renovation package.
So what he's asking is to pull that part back out and bid it separately.
Yes.
Do we have any contractors locally qualified to do this work?
No, sir.
And to bid it separately means what? I mean, I know what that means, but what is the implication?
The implication is here, we're trying to get this done at a quicker pace than remaining hard.
In the name of safety, I will move, allow the request to be on it.
Motion has been made to, out of the request to pull it out and to seek informal?
Right, and then we'll bring those informal bids back to the board at the next meeting. And if we don't like what we see, we'll throw them out and start all...
Is there any further discussion?
I would just suggest, I'm not opposed to doing that. I think it's fine. I would suggest that we find out specifically, the commissioner should be told directly, what is the issue with the jail, rather than speaking in vague generalities. I'd like to know specifically what's the issue. I hadn't heard, this is the first I heard about it.
Perhaps I...
It came up over. It cannot be discussed in a closed session.
Next time.
Well, just make a appointment with the sheriff of the jail.
You might want to go down and see the sheriff.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'll be walking through what's going on.
Call question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those saying nay? Is that, you have some more, John?
No, ma'am. That's it for me.
Commissioner's comments.
Mercifully enough.
A motion.
Just a second.
Happy New Year, everyone, and I guess this is setting the precedent for long meetings, but happy new year.
I have a very serious one, as far as I'm concerned, within the city limits. And I don't know, I spoke with the manager earlier. I don't know if any of you encounter some of these motorized wheelchairs on the highways. I had a scary experience last week. Well, this person's riding one. There are no kind of reflectors or anything on it, and had on dark clothing, and the unit was dark, and just turned right out in front of me. I know that's an individual's responsibility, but it doesn't make you feel any better if you creamed somebody. So I would ask that maybe we look into or have the city or the General Assembly look in. It would seem to me that as a safety feature, that they would come with reflective tape on or something along those lines. But we've got some folks, and I'm not trying to limit anyone's right to use the chairs or the streets and highways, but my goodness, there ought to be a certain amount of responsibility for being safe and having a vehicle that can be identified in darkness.
Can I ask, first step is to identify what those safety requirements are currently to see if maybe they're violated.
I'm going to get the county attorney to take a look at it, but, you know, they fall under the pedestrian requirements. Anybody in wheelchairs considered a pedestrian, and it's up to the motor vehicle operator to, you know, to observe those rules. But, you know, at night, if you go down, I guess that's by the hospital.
Yeah.
They're, yeah, they're right there, and if you don't catch them just right, you might not see them.
There's no sidewalks for them to go on, so...
Well, that's, that's...
You know, we have the same problem out of the county with some of these little mopeds.
Right.
Their lights are so dim that you can't see them at all, so...
We'll review that.
Okay. We also need to, this is just my short piece, but the board and committee assignments, I sent out a email, I think, December. And there were a couple of you that wanted off your boards, but I couldn't find a replacement.
Go figure.
So I guess, I guess we are as is. So just be aware that all of you are still on the same boards.
I want to trade places with Robert on one.
So if you want to do some horse trading on those, or somebody else would like to serve on the Sand Hills Mental Health Board, I'd be glad to switch. Anyway, take a look at that, and I guess I, either, email needs to reflect in the record on what boards we are on. So take a look at it, and if you want to switch with somebody, we can make that part of the record next meeting. Is that fair? Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.